And welcome to the regular meeting of the Beaumont City Council. Today is Tuesday, July 27th. And today, the invocation will be given by Pastor Ruby Nelson with United Methodist Church. And Pastor, thank you for coming forward.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
And it will be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you.
Thank you. If you so choose, please stand. Let us pray. Dear wise and loving Creator of all, thank you for life itself, for the measure of health we need to fulfill our callings. Thank you for the ability to be involved in useful work and the honor bearing appropriate responses. We pray for our mayor, for our city officials, and for this body of community leaders. We pray for a sense of welfare and true needs of our people. We pray for a keen thirst for justice. We pray for confidence in what is good and fitting. We pray for the ability to work together in harmony even when there is honest disagreement. We pray for the agenda set before this body today and an assurance of what would please you and what would benefit those who live and work in and around our city of Beaumont. Amen. Thank you. Please remain standing for our pledge. I'm sorry, we have an Eagle Scout, Sam Marchand, that will lead us in the pledge. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much, Sam. We have one recognition today, and the recognition is Pioneering Women Day. And I will be reading-
Mayor, can we have a roll call, please, real quick?
Sure. May we have the roll call, please?
Mayor Muton?
Present.
Mayor Protim Samuel?
Present.
Councilmember Durio?
Here.
Councilmember Getz?
Present.
Councilmember Turner?
Here.
Councilmember Felschah?
Present.
And Councilmember Neal?
Present.
Thank you, Clerk. I will be reading the proclamation for the pioneering women. And accepting this proclamation is Marlene Guillory, President, and others to follow, whereas women are an integral part in the success of society. Whereas Pioneering Women is a grassroots organization founded to enhance the lives of women, and its mission is to motivate, educate, activate, and uplift women for the betterment of humankind. Whereas Thursday, August 5th, 2021, will be "Let's Ruffle Some Feathers," commemorating the 101th anniversary of the ratification of the 19th Amendment to the United States Constitution, which guaranteed women the right to vote, and showcasing the diversity and contribution of women from all interested occupations and livelihoods. And whereas accomplishing this milestone requires a lengthy and difficult struggle, and this celebration help us to reflect on this unprecedented achievement, Pioneering Women is dedicated to honoring the legacy of those past pioneers and spotlight the contribution of present-day pioneers in our community. Whereas in honor of this celebration, Pioneering Women will be presented "Let's Ruffle Some Feathers" at a luncheon on Thursday, August 5th, 2019-2021, I'm sorry, honoring the following women for their dedication and contribution to their professions and to their communities. And the honorees are Sade Chick, Stephanie Davis, Debbie Bando, Gabriella Purperty, Belinda George, Susan Gonzalez, and Kim Phelan. Whereas proceeds from this annual event support women in crisis and many other nonprofit organizations in the community. It also provides textbooks for students of higher learning, students of two chances seeking high school equivalency with GED tests. Now therefore, I, Robin Muton, Mayor of the City of Beaumont, in honor and recognition of all women in our community, do hereby declare Thursday, August 5th, 2021 as Pioneering Women Day in Beaumont, and ask all citizens to join in and recognize the women of this community who have given of themselves for the betterment of society. Accordingly, I have here and to set my hand and cause the seal of the city of Beaumont to be affixed this day, July 27th, 2021. Signed, Mayor, Robin Muton. Marlene, would you please come forward and bring all of your ladies? Thank you.
I'd like to call up the honorees.
Do you want to come and get them? See the proclamation? Thank you.
Thank you so much. You all have been so very kind to this organization for many, many years, beginning in 2005, when the organization first was organized. And each year, we come before the council, no matter how many faces change, every new group seems to welcome each one of us every year. So I want to thank you. Thank you very much. And for recognition purposes, because you deserve it, Mayor Muton is a past honoree as well.
Thank you.
This year's group, the 2021 honorees, they are who we call reformers. And they are reformers in the community. They are doing great things, have done great things, and continue to do great things. And while doing so, they are ruffling some feathers. So come out on Thursday, on August 5th, at 11:30 a.m. to the luncheon, where we're going to showcase each one of our honorees this year with some background information about the things they've done in the community, and talk a little bit about the organization and the work that we do with our college assistance program, our GED programs, and other programs that we have going. Thank you all. You're standing so much at attention. You make us feel so special. We appreciate it. And thank you again.
Right? Thank you.
Thank you for being here. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you for being here.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If you'll bear with me just one minute before you leave, pioneering ladies, we have proclamations
for each one of you. Now is the time for any citizen who would like to speak. If you would like to do so, make a public comment on the scheduled agenda items, please go to the back of the room, make sure that you fill out a green slip, bring it to the clerk by sitting to my right and your left, so that she can call your name at the time. She will make sure that your name is called. You will have three minutes to speak once you get to the podium. The green light will come on when you approach the podium, and the red light will come on to let you know that your time is up.
Oh, I'm sorry. Gregory Rice, 1130 Monterey, Beaumont, Texas.
Good afternoon. I've emailed all of you multiple times about my opposition to the purchase of this building. It seems to be a foregone conclusion within the community that this is a done deal, that it's slam dunk, that the town hall we had was nothing but a sham, just a horse and dog and pony show. That very well may be the case. But I want to ask you all to do one thing, and it's very simple. Put this off for one week, and over the next week, every one of you up there, load up in a city van, go down there to MLK and I-10, park your van at that convenience store, dress just like you are now. Don't go early in the morning. Don't go late in the evening when it might be cool. You go this time of day, when it's sweltering hot, when it's miserable. And each and every one of you, go there as a group. Don't take water. Don't take them treats. Go just as you sit, and you go look at each and every one of those people living under that bridge, and you tell them to their face how $7 million to destroy a perfectly good building benefits them. Go find Curtis, the man I saw at a red light and gave a cold bottle of water to, smiled like I had handed him a million dollars. Go find the man, the light was green, I didn't get a chance to get his name, gave him a $0.99 loaf of bread, $2 pack of lunch meat, dollar bottle of mustard, and he looked like a kid on Christmas morning. And y'all are sitting up there wanting to spend $7 million of taxpayer dollars to tear down a building. How can you justify that when we have people living in that condition in our community? So go find them. Go find the little lady that was on Channel 6, terrified to go out in her community because of the crime. Go find the little lady that was on Channel 6, can't drive up and down her street because it's so torn up. And y'all look them in the eye, and you tell them how buying this building helps them. You know, Jesus said, "Whatever you do for the least among me, you do for me." The lesser-known or lesser-recited part of that scripture, "What you don't do for the least among you, you don't do for me." You all are not doing for the least of this community. You're doing for yourselves, you're doing for your political agenda, and you're doing for the rich and the powerful. So take one more week, go meet those people, go home, look yourself in the mirror, and ask yourself if that was my mom, my dad, my brother, my sister, my son, my daughter, my niece, my nephew, my coworker, would I still spend $7 million, or would I find a way to help them? Thank you.
Preston Frank, 78 and 95, Boyd Road, Beaumont, Texas.
Good afternoon. My name is Preston Frank, and I am for purchasing that building. We need to finish what we started with Crocker Street with private investors. That building is not being used. It needs to be sold to someone, and hope and pray that it's not someone from another city or from another area. By Tom Flanagan purchasing that building, you've been given a chance to right or wrong because you could have bought it yourselves. I think if we invest into downtown Beaumont and take advantage of the western heritage that this area has, the oldest ranch in the state of Texas is just 21 miles from here, right there in Winnie. If we would do what Fort Worth did when it comes down to living cowboys and the old ranchers that started this area down here, at one time, all of this was the country. So I think that if we would take advantage of this opportunity now and purchase that building from Tom Flanagan, he'd stop and put his money into it where we should have. We're losing another investment in this area, Ford Park. I'm a life member of the YMBAO, and I asked our membership to purchase Ford Park. We was told it had a $60 million debt. When we found out that now you can get it for $22 million, that's wrong. We need to take advantage of all of the people that passed down Interstate 10 and passed right through this city, and we do not collect one quarter. So I think if this city council is wise, you all should invest in that building and tear it down and finish Riverfront Park like you should, so people can come back downtown and enjoy this area. Thank you.
Keith Blackwood, 7740 Weaver Drive, Beaumont, Texas, item number nine.
Good afternoon. I can only echo the remarks of the first speaker, that we should not buy this building. We can look at Crocker Street, as been said. We can look at Ford Park. There's been no viable development in that area. And I don't see spending the kind of money that we're talking about on buying a building to tear it down. We have homeless people. We have people here who go to bed hungry every night. We have drainage problems. We have street problems. This money could be put to much, much better uses than buying this building. And again, as before, I ask you, think about it. These people need help. The city needs help. This will provide no direct help to anyone. Thank you.
Steve Hoffman, 7045 Blowney Street, Beaumont, Texas, item number nine.
Madam Mayor, Members of Council, I rise to speak on item nine. It's the AT&amp;T Building, which has come a whole new fame in and of itself. But I guess one thing that's bothering me about this whole project, I love the idea of something on the water, make use of it. I remember the rear front, when I was a kid, when you go down Main Street, and then you could drive right into the lake, into the river, and not be stopped by anything. That's 1950s. But also, I remember the Alyssa, when the Alyssa docked, and the people came, the kids came. It kind of gave a whole refreshed attitude to the city. And I keep thinking, why aren't we looking at something to do to draw people in? We're looking at spending a lot of money. I'm not seeing a business plan. In any business, if you go to the bank, they're going to say, "I want to see a business plan." What are you going to do to make enough money to pay for the money we're going to give you? I would think if the money we're going to spend on AT&amp;T, and we can't do something that generates revenue to help pay it back, and we've got needs, which you hear about, a lot of honest, legitimate needs, and we're not doing anything that says guaranteed that we're going to get any money back. It's going to be there, we're going to tear it down, make a space available, apparently put some grass, and hope that someone comes and makes something with it? I mean, maybe tell them if Fertitta's got some space in his schedule, I don't know. It's what he did to down to Kima, but you know, he's not around here. So I just ask you to think about, look from a business viewpoint, and are you going to generate enough revenue to pay for itself if you don't? Maybe we're spending too much? Maybe we're giving them too much money? Seven million seems like a lot. But if we can generate property revenues, tax revenues, business people coming in town, I say go for it, but only in those circumstances. And I mean, let the people act like you're banker. You know, we're going to look at it and say, "Okay, what's your business plan? What are you going to do to make the revenue?" You know, not just throw money away. Because, you know, that's going to come back to haunt you. And you know me, I'll tell it as it is. And I heard about Battleship Texas. I think that would be one of the things to draw people in, that make the property work for you, if you can bring something in to bring people over to that area, and make use of the Riverfront Park and everything else. But that's the second thing. I'll be talking to you in the next session about that. But anyway, just think about it. I think when you put a bit of a minimalist aspect on it, it's not going to look so beautiful. Anyway, thank you.
Brian Neepfo, 6915 Shanahan Drive, Beaumont, Texas.
Good afternoon, Council, Mayor. I didn't want to fly off the cuff today. I prepared some notes, if you don't mind, I'll just read them out loud. First, I want to thank Councilman Mike Getz for his consideration to appoint me to the Community Development Advisory Committee. I'm looking forward to working with Biggie Uida. She ran for mayor. You know, she has a lot of great ideas. She's in vacation in Cancun right now, so she missed. And I'm looking forward to working with the other 14 appointees and volunteers with this committee. For those listening and watching, the purpose and the mission of this committee, the CDAC, is to work with the council to enhance the quality of life for low-income citizens of Beaumont in six areas: affordable housing, economic development, public service, education, employment, and healthcare. With 15 members, the CDAC, we come from all backgrounds, have different viewpoints, all ages, colors, from all walks of life. In this diverse team, there will be many ideas to brainstorm about and ultimately present to council for consideration. As a diversified group, we'll be neutral in a think-tank setting where ideas will flourish, not bias, not word line agendas. I pledge to work with our team to the best of my ability, to work together to form a consensus, to make the best recommendations to council that will benefit low-income citizens in need, and as Beaumont as a whole. The duties of the CDAC is to have an advisory-working relationship with council to present recommendations on the needs of our community. I'm proud to be appointed to serve on this committee and ready to take on anything I am called to do for Beaumont. It's a fact that many hands make light work. Together, the CDAC and council will do great things. I have been called to serve, and I'll put 110% into this committee. And with God's help, thank you all for the opportunity to let me serve. I won't let you down.
Steve Kurtz, 215 East Florida Avenue, Beaumont, Texas, item number nine.
Hello. My name's Steve Kurtz. I'm a direct descendant of Nancy and Noah Tevis. Noah Tevis was born in Baltimore in 1783. His grandfather, Robert, was born in 1709. Noah's father took his family, Peter, moved his family to Kentucky in 1793. Noah moved to Tennessee, then moved south into Louisiana. Noah met and married Nancy Nixon in 1911, the year before the War of 1812. He was 29 and she was 15. This was a frontier marriage. In 1817, Noah paid 25 cents tax on 25 horned cattle in Louisiana. In 1824, they loaded up their wagon and moved west on the Opelousas Trail, which is a south trail, and as Austin and Myland were pursuing west on the Nacogdoches Trail. Noah built a log cabin, cleared 20 acres of far farm, and built a pen for livestock, and he ran a ferry and fed the people that came along the trail. Before she died, Nancy Tevis donated the land along the river to be a park to be used by the citizens of Beaumont in perpetuity. When the foundation for the AT&amp;T Building was dug, the cistern and the junk pile was discovered. So the family went down there, and we picked up a bunch of junk, you know, broken doorknobs and pottery and such, and it's been lost. Nobody put anything in. So the AT&amp;T Building is very near the actual site of their cabin. If we're going to tell the story of Beaumont, we have to start at the beginning. If we're going to sell Beaumont, we must tell the story of Beaumont, the whole story of Beaumont, of slaves and slavery, of domestic help, lumbermen, oilfield and refinery workers, the shipbuilders. We went halfway with the downtown development, no support nor comprehensive plan, and we were still cut off from the Natures River. If we build a hike and bike trail, people will come and hang out, just like they did at Cattail Marsh. I didn't think that they would come and hang out at the passive water treatment plant. We can't develop downtown Beaumont without access to the river. The Natures River Festival will take on a whole new meaning. We could have a homecoming festival coinciding with the South Texas State Fair. We can't know where we're going unless we know where we came from. I encourage the Beaumont City Council to vote yes to purchase the AT&amp;T Building and proceed with the proposed park. I have just a couple of little stories here. This is a letter, 1836, from Joseph Paulsford to his sister. "We then continued on perhaps a half a mile farther when we came to the house owned by a man named Tevis, a most singular being who quickly set spirit and cups to drink out of. He had a large field embracing perhaps 20 acres cleared from trees, except for a few peach and fig trees just around his dwelling. His house was likewise built of logs, consisted of two 10-feet, two halves separated by 10 feet, and the whole was covered with a continuous roof and floored." And this is where the stranger's sitting, so-
I'll give you a few more minutes.
May I have one more minute?
Yes.
We are informed, so this is from the newspaper Telegraph and Texas Register, San Felipe de Austin, 26 October, 1835. "We are informed that a new town has lately been laid out on the tide water of the River Natures, at a place known as Tevis's Bluff, 30 miles from the Sabine Bay. Its situation is said to be one of the most delightful in Texas, and it has already commenced improving at a rapid rate. It is spoken of as a town which promised to be of considerable importance. It has received the name of Beaumont, which from the description of the place strikes our fancy as very appropriate." So I would like to encourage you all to, and I believe that it's not people who want this versus people who don't want this. I believe Michael gets it. I believe Councilman Getz is not against moving forward. I don't think the people that are opposing this particular project are against people moving forward. And I don't think that we can be the Beaumont that I would like to see, that many of us would like to see, without the development on the river. Thank you.
Thank you. Brenda Beatle, 11135 Cold Drive, Beaumont, Texas, item number three on the consent
Good morning. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. I'm here just to, as a member of the Beaumont Council of Garden Clubs, and to speak on item number three, which is the contract between the City of Beaumont and the Beaumont Council of Garden Clubs. It's on your consent agenda, number three, and as a member, I'm very pleased with this agreement. We worked really hard to come up with an agreement that works for both the council to develop the botanical gardens, as well as with the city. As you're aware, over the past few years, we've suffered two floods, we've had wild hog invasions, and we've had the freeze of this winter, doing considerable damage to our botanical gardens. Last year, though, the city came in and approved the installation of a fence, and that's been completed, and that's made a considerable difference. I don't think we're going to have a problem with hog intrusion anymore. We've got a new council on board with the botanical gardens, and with this new contract, which gives us a little more assistance from the city, I believe that we will be able to beautify the gardens, and they'll recover. We'd like to also ask that you all come out and visit, visit the gardens. We are making improvements out there. It looks really pretty this time of year, and it'll only get better. So we appreciate your recommendation and approval of this agreement that's on your agenda. Thank you.
Thank you. Mike, and I'm not really sure what the last name is. The address is 710 Monterey Drive, Beaumont, Texas, item number nine.
Hello, Mayor, Council, City Manager. My name is Mike Kachope. I've spoken on this subject before, which is the purchase of the AT&amp;T Building. Last time I spoke with you, I told you I was against that purchase. I am still against the purchase.
Excuse me, sir, I'm sorry. Could you talk in the mic? Could you pull the, yes?
All right. You want me to repeat what I said?
Yes, sir, I couldn't hear you, sorry.
My name's Mike Kachope. I've spoken to the council before on the subject of the purchase of the AT&amp;T Building. I'm against the- I'm against the purchase of that building, I'm still against it. Each one of you council members, as well as the mayor and the city manager, received a letter from me with three alternatives that you could use instead of that purchase. I'm going to kind of repeat some of what I've already sent you in a letter. But I'm supportive of downtown restoration and development, and especially of the riverfront. But I don't think you have to buy the AT&T property to do that. My understanding is that the city has federal money to restore the riverfront. If I'm wrong, someone needs to correct me about that right now, but I believe we have millions of dollars to do that. I have noticed that the council in the past keeps comparing the city of Beaumont to other cities. And as I mentioned in my letter, we were compared a lot to Port Natchez. And I pointed out in my letter that we are not Port Natchez, and Beaumont, and Port Natchez is not Beaumont. And we need to let Beaumont be Beaumont. There's big differences between the riverfront and Port Natchez and the one in Beaumont. The one in Port Natchez does not have the railroad tracks dividing the property and the river. We do. They don't have the railroad noise, we do. They don't have the industry that we have surrounding the river, that we do. And we do not have a wooded park next to our riverfront, like they do. So it's a big difference between the two. So as I said in my letter to you, you're comparing apples and oranges. But I did give you three alternatives that is not gonna cost the city anything for a compromise solution. One is that the city owns the parking lot, which is on river level. Does everyone know where I'm talking about? As you go down beyond the tracks, I'm not getting affirmation from anyone on the council that maybe one or... Anyway, I used to park there when I worked for the city, because I went on early morning riser. But anyway, I'd get here at eight o'clock, when I'm supposed to, I'd park down below. That property could be used for anyone, any private person that wants to develop a venue on the river. The city could work with them on that. The second piece of property is that the parking lot over here to the north side, I'm already through to... Can I finish?
Go ahead and finish your...
The parking lot to this side over here on the north side, over there by the dumpsters, there is area there that a venue could be put in, working with the city. The third place is in back of the AT&T building is Cypress Street, which the city owns Cypress Street. That whole piece of property could be used for development. So anyway, I'm against making this purchase because of the reasons that have been stated in the past. We have many problems that need to be addressed in the city, and the money could be used in better areas. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Christopher Matthews, thirty-eight seventy-five North Major Drive, Beaumont, Texas. Item number nine.
How y'all doing today, City Council, Madam Mayor? I wanted to come speak on this issue because I did the records request form, and I got the emails that you spoke about, Councilman Gutz, on the news about this issue. And I just want to read a couple of them. This one is from Catherine Nichols. And the issue that I had with these emails is because, like everybody else that came to comment today, they gave their address, and they gave their name, so we know that they're residents here in Beaumont. These are just email addresses. But this is Catherine Nichols. She says, "The city of Beaumont does not need to purchase the AT&T building. It's a waste of taxpayers' money that could be spent improving drainage and streets." All right, here's another one. This is Alan Wortley. "Please do not waste our tax dollars purchasing AT&T building. Our sewers, drainage, and police protection should be yours and our priorities." Now, I went through these hundred emails, most of them fall in this category, which is really not, they're not saying... They're saying that they don't want to purchase the AT&T building, but they're saying that the drainage, the sewer, and the streets are a priority. One of the people that I found in this category was somebody you're familiar with, Councilman Phil Shaw, is Dr. Stephen Samuels. He's a good friend of mine, all right? So I called him and I asked him about this. And he said, "Yes, I have drainage issues, sewer issues here at my house, and that's more important to me." I explained to him that the city has already committed, like, was it fifty-seven, sixty million dollars towards infrastructure, and that five million dollars would be towards this, which is something, a recreational investment. After I explained to him that, and informed him and gave him the information and the knowledge, he says, "Yeah, I don't see any problem with it." And that's where most of these emails that you got on the news, and you said was eighty-two percent of them was against it. Thirty-nine percent of them fell in this category. And so I just decided to reach out to Stephen. And Councilman Gutz, I think that you're misusing this information, you're twisting it, and you're taking advantage of some people not being aware of the investment in the millions of dollars of projects and infrastructure that the city has already committed to. And you're making it seem like they're just wasting taxpayers' money. It's not a waste, it's an investment for recreational. What I see this city council doing is that, instead of just saying, "We're gonna put infrastructure as a priority," they understand that people also need, in the city, need something recreational to do. And so they're just trying to give the city and the citizens all of that at one time. Instead of waiting seven, six, seven, eight years down the road to these infrastructure issues have been resolved, and then decide they want to do something recreational. Why can't we do it all at one time when we have the capacity to do it? You really need to check on Sunbury Street? I feel sorry for the people that live around that area. That's your ward. Thank you, y'all have a good day.
Thank you. Dana Rothensberger, thirty-eight ninety East Lynnwood Drive, Beaumont, Texas.
Hello, everyone, once again. You know, I am all for growth, I am all for Beaumont being better, and I want to see good things happen here. I want places for active people to go out and play. I want people that work at ExxonMobil to want to live in Beaumont because they've got so much of that good stuff to do. At the same time, the part of the property that's wanting to be developed is already owned by the city. We already have it. We could develop there, we could go ahead and do it. Maybe the guy that has the building looks over there and says, "Hey, the city's really wanting to develop this riverfront. I am sitting on a goldmine. I could develop this, I could have apartments, I could have a restaurant there, right next to the restaurant here. It's really not gonna change the view of the river any. We've got a nice white sand beach, sometimes you can see it, sometimes there's a whole bunch of boats over there. We don't have ships going past like the wheelhouse has. But that view's kind of worth that twenty-mile bike ride I take occasionally. But it'd be a whole lot nicer if I could just ride downtown. But why are we waiting? Why are we waiting to destroy something before we're gonna build anything? We could already do that. We don't have to wait. We don't have to say we're not gonna do this that we could already do unless we get this. Kind of seems childish and throwing a fit type things. Maybe there's a bigger, broader plan. Maybe there's bigger ideas of what we're gonna do. And maybe we're not all, you know, in the clique that knows what's gonna go happen after that's purchased and torn down. But I do hope that no matter what happens, we finish the job, because we didn't finish the job with the event center. We didn't finish a lot of jobs. We've got beautiful parks, but we don't have restrooms, we don't have a place for anybody to buy something to drink. Imagine if we just finished what we already have. Thank you.
Mayor, I have one additional person, and I want to say, it looks like Maggie McMillan, thirty-three ninety-five Holland, maybe? Did you want to speak on the... You checked a public hearing, and we don't have one, so I'm trying to figure out... Did you want to speak? Regarding... I'm sorry? Okay, we'll do that at the end of the meeting for public comments. Okay, that's all I have, Mayor. Thank you. Oh, we have one additional, I'm sorry, Mayor. Eric Bender, twenty-seven seventy IH-ten East Beaumont, Texas. Item number nine.
Hi, good to see y'all. Five-five-five Main Street. I want to see the city move forward. I don't want to see the city tear a building down. We've had enough destruction, we've had enough homes, we've got enough vacant lots in this town. If we want to see the city grow, we need to get whoever owns that building to develop it. I know several people who are in real estate that if that was their property, it would be bristling with activity right now. We need people downtown. We don't need a parking lot, we don't need a park, we don't need grass. We got the most modern park facility in southeast Texas, a thousand feet from here, three blocks. It's beautiful, it's magnificent, it's incredible, but it hasn't made downtown or it hasn't made Beaumont grow, because Beaumont needs people downtown. Imagine if five-five-five Main were actually residential property, and you had the ability to live there and overlook the river every morning when you woke up. Or if it was a party venue, and you were having a wedding or a funeral, a life memorial, there on the property to commemorate your family, and you had this beautiful view of the river. We want to destroy that, and it doesn't make any sense. If you go to Houston, we've compared the, I brought up the idea of Discovery Green. You go to Houston and you look at Discovery Green, and I've watched it develop. We used to charter a bus and do a bike ride, and we parked right in front of the convention center there. It's surrounded now by high-rise, luxury living and hotels and event centers that have all, you know, developed around the park. Well, the park is necessary when there's that much development. People need space when there's that much development. But there's no one down here. You don't have to look when you drive your bicycle around downtown, you can just ride. It's crazy. We need people down here. We need to develop that building, and we need to put pressure on the people that own the buildings down here to develop them. There's lots of codes violations that go on constantly because those buildings are not developed. And those need to be addressed. The other thing, I've written y'all about reading the book Strong Towns. One of the things that Strong Towns talks about is relaxing some of those codes violations, so it's not so expensive to rehabilitate these older buildings. Or make a plan that whoever gets it, once they become profitable, begin to layer on things that bring it more up to code. But we need to figure out how we can get more people to live and work down here by the river. Who wouldn't want to live here?
Thank you. David Aldrich, sixty-nine twenty Blarney, Beaumont, Texas. Items number nine and fifteen.
Hello, I'm David Aldrich, and I'm not much of a speaker, but I want to tell y'all, please don't throw this money away on this AT&T building. This town, this downtown area is dead. There's nobody gonna come here, they're not gonna stop anybody on the highway with this thing. I kind of like the idea that Mike Gutz has about bringing the Battleship Texas to this city. That would not only stop people on the highway, but it'd bring revenue into this town, real revenue. Spending that money on that AT&T building is a waste. It's just throwing your money away. Also, I want to say something about items fifteen and sixteen on the agenda, about raising taxes, the taxes on the water and the sewer and garbage. Look, you're fixing to get a big windfall off of this crazy reevaluation of property. You should be thinking about cutting taxes, not raising taxes on something. The people of Beaumont can't afford to just keep throwing the taxes away and away and away like that. And also, you might all consider putting a ceiling on the senior citizens of this town. You know, freeze taxes for the senior citizens in this town. Unless that's where you get all your money from, maybe you're getting all your money from the senior citizens, because maybe the young people just don't want to buy nothing or own nothing. But that's something that you should really consider. And I appreciate your time, but mainly, that AT&T building, don't do that, don't do that. But you and I both know that you'll never recover the money on that project. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Holly Peterson, eight-twenty-five Norwood, Beaumont, Texas. Item number fifteen.
Thank you guys for your time. I want to tell you a quick story. In June twenty-twenty, during a very rainy week in the city of Beaumont, and while my young son was just home from Houston recovering from a surgery, our home became uninhabitable because sewage was backing up in great quantities into our home. We had to evacuate our house and then play a familiar game with the city that we've played for years called "Whose Line Is It Anyway?" We played that with plumbers and with the city. We had, in complete desperation, we had to replace all our outdoor plumbing, and we installed two new, brand-new cleanouts at the recommendation of the city of Beaumont. One month and thousands of dollars of my own money later, we still had a problem and sewage was coming in whenever it rained. We begged the city to fix their line, and for our efforts, we received a crew that sprayed two geysers of sewage water into both of our bathrooms and left without telling us or cleaning it up. The resulting complaint I filed with the city was largely ignored because it was falsely stated that we refused water remediation. I would have loved any raw water remediation at that point. However, it was only then that the city made any repairs to their line, and only then that sewage stopped backing up into our house on a daily basis, though we continue today to still have drainage issues when it rains. As a result of the city's actions in the middle of a pandemic and virtual learning and a hurricane, I had to gut and replace ninety percent of my home's interior. And I had to do that for the health and safety of my three children. To this day, I have yet to receive one dollar from the city of Beaumont for what we experienced last year, not one dollar. Two years ago, I started a petition to add a dog park to Rogers Park. That was me that started that, it's my pet project. It was signed by more than two-thousand-five-hundred people to date. On February ninth, Councilman Samuel cited water and drainage issues as a contributing factor for why this dog park wasn't feasible. He said, quote, "When we begin to talk about dog parks and the citizens looking at this can't flush their commode when it rains, there is a problem." Yes, sir, there is a problem. One I'm uniquely acquainted with. In fact, I would have appreciated having a dog park at that time because I had to board my dog, I couldn't use my yard. It's ironic that the city took away my right to use my own property because of drainage issues, which I had to spend thousands of dollars to prove. And it's also ironic that they took away my dream of having a dog park because of drainage issues. Therefore, I cannot reconcile why we don't have enough money to install fencing for a new dog park at Rogers Park... Can I finish? "...that a good portion of your citizens want and would use, but we do have enough money to purchase the AT&T building. My mama would call that talking out of both sides of your mouth. Also, I do not understand how you could possibly consider raising taxes for the brown water you're shamelessly pumping through our pipes and the sewage that works in reverse..."
Excuse me, please, no outbursts.
I'm sorry, "and the drainage that works in reverse in our city. Members of council, something is going on, and I implore you to get to the bottom of it. Beaumont citizens are paying to have the price as it is. Please do not vote to raise our taxes and instead spend your time and your money on fixing your lines. Thank you."
Thank you. That's all I have, Mayor. City Clerk, I'm gonna go ahead and allow this gentleman to go ahead and make his comments so that he doesn't have to wait till the end. Mr. McMillan? Is he the only one, Mr. McMillan? No, we have several people that want to speak during public comments. Oh, okay, thank you, I thought it was only one. No, no, ma'am. Okay, thank you. You checked public comments, are you... Yes, sir, yes, sir. Number nine, is it regarding number nine?
Yeah, it would fit better here.
Okay. Go ahead. Alto Watson, twenty-six fifteen Gladys, Beaumont, Texas.
I didn't know the AT&T building was gonna be discussed. I have a handout for the city council.
Is that your, this one?
Yeah, that right there. I didn't realize that, you know, I had another idea, I didn't know this was being discussed. What I'm handing out here is a picture of the USS Alabama in Mobile, Alabama, and the view is from Interstate Ten. and the view is from Interstate 10. The USS Alabama sits out on Mobile Bay in a sun-drenched park with nothing in it and nothing around it about a mile from downtown Mobile. They have 300,000 people a year go to this battleship. You people have a chance, as we sit here right now, to obtain the Battleship Texas, the only dreadnought battleship left in the world. They only get 80,000 people at the San Jacinto Park to it because it's impossible to get to. You got to go on that little crackerjack, you know, ferry across the Ship Channel or you got to go all the way around through Pasadena. That would be the view of the Battleship Texas off the Interstate 10 Bridge when people would see it. You could have great big signs, "Visit the Battleship Texas in downtown Beaumont, Texas." On top of that, instead of spending $4 million to knock down this building, why not let's have the Battleship Texas Water Park on the Natures River, right over here where all this green grass is. On top of that, instead of knocking down the AT&amp;T building, why don't you turn it into the Naval Museum of Texas? You could have the Battleship Texas, you know, visitor center. You could have Beaumont's, you know, contribution to the Liberty ships that we built here, the petrochemical industry you fight for war to. You could have all the contributions from every single war. While bringing up the Civil War is not a great thing. The greatest naval battle of the Civil War was 20 miles away from here by Dick Dowling. Like 15 Confederate soldiers defeated an entire United States Navy and prevented the invasion of Texas by the Union. You could have a McDonald's or a Chick-fil-A inside the building. You could have massive different parts. You could even, and based upon it being refurbished, you could use it as a shelter for hurricanes. So if you want to have people come, and on top of that, then suddenly now people go to water parks, you got to have a hotel. Boom, Hotel Beaumont. Bang, you got people at Crockett Street, all with a battleship that they want to give you. I talked to the regional major for the Texas Parks and Wildlife today. Guy named Doug Huggins, he's from here. They want Beaumont to have it. It's the only freshwater port that can hold it. But you people have not sent in any type of request. You want to know why? Because it's Mike Getz's idea. Y'all are phrasing him out. You won't even sit around and talk about it. I've just said here, the entire redevelopment of the city of Beaumont-Natures River. And y'all sit there on your hands. If Mr. Samuel had suggested, we'd have it right now. So that's my idea, so that's what you ought to do.
That is all that I have, Mayor.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to call for a motion for the consent agenda.
Second. I'm sorry, who's second, Mayor? I didn't. Councilmember Samuel.
Councilmember Samuel. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Neal?
Thank you, Mayor. Item number seven, Mr. Manager. Does this also include the police chief and the fire chief?
Yes, but they were included the last time you approved it because they're not sworn employees. So this is three sworn, two in the police department and one in the fire department that are sworn. They're covered by the contract, but their wages are not in the wage table. So this would provide them the 2%.
All right, thank you.
Any other discussion? Councilmember Durya?
On the Botanical Gardens, is that building there, is that available to the city to use whenever they need to use it?
I think they would allow us to. We have an excellent relationship with them. We were, he's in the back, we've been working on this proposed agreement for a number of months and I think the short answer is yes.
What about private citizens? Can they rent it?
They can rent it from the Botanical Gardens.
Any other discussion?
But they have let us use it for official city business. The councils had work sessions and retreats out there at that center, even within the last 10 years.
Anything else? All in favor of approving the consent agenda? All opposed? The motion passed. May I have the reading of the next item, Mr. Manager?
Mayor and Council, item number nine is to consider authorizing the city manager to execute all documents necessary to acquire the building and property located at 555 Main Street. The property is approximately 3.7 acres in size and includes the former AT&amp;T building that has been vacant for many years. The property is located west of the Natures River and is surrounded by city-owned parking lots and streets, specifically the Civic Center parking lot, Main Street, Tevis Street, and Cypress Street. The additional acreage would allow for possible expansion of riverfront park, public spaces such as sidewalks, hike and bike trails, and other amenities for citizens and visitors. If acquired, the city council would be in control of the property and would decide the priorities and next steps. The city would acquire the property for $2,785,000 plus associated fees, including various closing cost fees and title company expenses. All of the above expenditures would be paid for with available cash in the general fund's fund balance. The fund balance is the city's rainy day account. In essence, it'd be a savings account at your home. So the fund balance has approximately $50 million in it, which is 36% of expenditures in the general fund. The financial policies adopted by the city council as a part of the 2021 budget state that the general fund ending fund balance not be less than 20% of that fund's annual operating expenditures. There is one substantive change to the contract from the contract that you had on June the 15th. If you'll look at page 11 of the contract. Page 11, Article 21. I'll read it. It says, "After closing, if the buyer determines to not completely demolish the improvements, seller shall have the right to repurchase the property from the buyer and you can see for the same price that you are considering today." So if the city does not completely demolish the improvements, they could buy it back. The administration does not see that as a problem because, as we've discussed many times with the city council and at the town hall meeting, the city council's desire is to take the building down, take out the parking lot, clean it up, and put in the amenities that you so choose, number one, for the public, for residents, and also to hopefully make it attractive like we did at the event center, the Lakeside Center, and other projects around the city of Beaumont. And hopefully to attract development on those, in essence, pad sites. Hopefully it will allow for restaurants to be developed in the future. That's the end goal. So with that, the administration recommends approval.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Council, you've heard the reading of item number nine. Is there a motion, please?
I saw move for approval.
Second?
Second.
There's a second, a motion and a second on the floor. Is there any questions or discussion? Councilmember Getz.
Before making any comments about the substantive reasons for the city of Beaumont to buy or not buy the AT&amp;T building, I want to talk about the highly irregular procedure that is being followed in this matter. As Holly Peterson indicated, in February, I requested that an item be placed on the agenda that was petitioned for by over 2,600 people, that being the creation of a dog park at Rogers Park. This is a project that would cost around $75,000 and would serve those citizens that are not privileged enough to have large yards for their dogs to run freely, primarily residents of nearby apartments. Councilmember Neal seconded my motion and discussion was had. When it came time for Councilmember Samuel to talk, he said he had a problem with the project, not because of the project itself, but the way it was being presented. He said that the dog park was not in the capital plan and was not budgeted. He said that the dog park, that there was a process and even though the process may be slow at times, the process needs to be followed. He said, "Too much is going on right now. In the midst of a pandemic, we're going to go into our fund balance? That is not what the fund balance is for, not for someone's special project." The council member for Ward 4 continued that people are having problems with their infrastructure, getting water into their houses and sewage out. These are primary concerns, he said. Those are necessities, not quality of life projects. So after listening to Councilmember Samuel for a few minutes, Councilmember Neal decided to pull his second and suggested that the matter be set for discussion in a workshop the following week. I went along with that, so a workshop was set for the following week. At the workshop, Councilmember Samuel took the same position. This is what he said, verbatim, "A dog park is not a necessity. There are many other things we need to do. Water and sewage, streets and drainage, pipe bursting, trash in the neighborhoods. I don't think it's the time when we have people calling about sewer backing up in the house, trash on the roadways. We don't need to get into playing war politics. We have to be sensitive to all citizens. It's a process." When we say dog parks, but citizens can't flush their commodes, it's a problem. A dog park is not a necessity. It needs to go through the process of putting it into the capital program and Councilmember Getz has not done so, and I have a problem with that. So even though this was a relatively inexpensive item that was desired by thousands of people, I deferred and said fine, and I requested that it be put in the proposed 22 capital plan. And when we got the proposed 2022 capital plan in May, the city manager had put the requested dog park in the plan. Now flash forward four months and here comes this proposal to purchase the AT&amp;T building for $2.8 million and spend another couple of million more to tear it down and landscape it to build a park of all things. And guess what? Just like the proposed dog park at Rogers Park was not in the 2021 capital plan, which is the plan that we're currently operating under, the proposed purchase and demolition of the AT&amp;T building is not in the 2021 capital plan. Just like the proposed dog park at Rogers Park is not funded, neither is the proposed purchase and demolition of the AT&amp;T building. So what happened to the process? Is it war politics if something is desired in war two, but that same narrative does not apply if something is desired in war three? And what about all of the problems with people that can't flush their commodes when it rains, with sewage backing up into the homes, street issues, trash in the streets? Have we fixed all of those problems in the last four months? Is this proposed park on the side of the AT&amp;T building a necessity? Or is it a quality of life project like the dog park? Is the complete and utter hypocrisy of this lost on all of you? And unlike the dog park, where you have an overwhelming desire by citizens to have it created, this issue is nothing but divisive. How ironic that many of you ran on a platform of bringing unity and the first shot out of the gate is something that brings division and outrage. And make no mistake, citizens are not happy about this. Many people in this city, including myself, want to see our riverfront developed and we came to the event center for a town hall meeting to see, quote, "the plan," unquote. But it turns out there was no plan, just some pictures of the site that were photoshopped with amenities from other cities to give people an idea of what could go on the site of the AT&amp;T building. No restaurants or retail development is being proposed for the site of the AT&amp;T building, none. Instead, the proposed development site is identified as being in the back parking lot of the Civic Center. This is property already owned by the city of Beaumont. So if the idea is to get a restaurant downtown where you can look out over the water, well, the city already owns that property, so the AT&amp;T property is not even needed. And how would a proposed restaurant on the back property of the Civic Center work? Would we cut down the beautiful trees at the back of the Civic Center parking lot to make room for the restaurant? And what about when there are events scheduled at the Civic Center or the Beaumont Children's Museum, which is inside the Civic Center? Would there be enough parking for everyone, especially if the restaurant is going to take up part of the parking lot? But I digress. The point is that the development site is already owned and controlled by the city of Beaumont and as Ms. Rothenberg said, the AT allocation is not needed. And the truth of the matter is that if you want a restaurant with a view, the best place would be on the top floor of the AT&amp;T building. I have been told that this building is the most structurally sound building in downtown Beaumont by people in the construction business. I had been inside the building and I would have to agree. Instead of buying it and tearing it down, why are we not working with Mr. Flanagan to get it occupied? Now, I'm not suggesting, make sure you note this, I am not suggesting that we use taxpayer dollars to fix up the building. That's not appropriate. But maybe we reach out to KFDM and ask them to consider downtown as their new studio since I-10 is going to cut right through where they are right now. For good measure, the Beaumont Enterprise is looking to downsize. Put them in the AT&amp;T building also and create a media center and a restaurant on the top floor. Maybe dedicate part of the building to lofts or apartments with a view of the river. Getting more people working downtown, living downtown, is the key to revitalization of downtown. It might even jumpstart Crockett Street. If you want to get activity going in downtown on the waterfront, instead of dreaming about a developer putting in a restaurant on land that they do not own, I have suggested on social media for the city to partner with the private sector and put in the infrastructure for an upscale food truck park on land the city already owns. Last week, I showed you an illustration as to where the Battleship Texas could be birthed if the various local entities were to get together and pursue that. But to date, as Mr. Watson said, no council member has indicated even a willingness to second my request to have a workshop to discuss the feasibility of that idea. So I'm taking that as a sign of lack of interest. However, apart from the AT&amp;T building, apart from the Battleship Texas, the idea of an upscale food truck park would do more to jumpstart downtown than anything since Crockett Street was in its heyday. I wanted to do this at the town hall meeting but didn't have the opportunity, so I'll take the opportunity now. I have some photographs that I want to share with the public of what such a venue could look like.
Mr. Manager, are the photos allowable?
Mayor, the motion on the floor is the acquisition of the AT&amp;T building. And by your rules that you have adopted, if you as the chairman determine that the motion is in order, you can end the discussion and call for a vote.
Okay, I'm going to call for the vote. Thank you. All in favor of approving item number nine, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No way.
The motion carries. Thank you. May I have the reading of the next item, please? Thank you.
Mayor and Council, item number 10 is an ordinance entitled in ordinance granting a specific use permit to allow a sports bar in a GCMD, General Commercial, multiple-family dwelling district for property located at 2455 South 11th Street in the city of Beaumont, Jefferson County, Texas. William Griffin is applying for the specific use permit. The facility will be located in an existing strip center on 11th Street. A joint public hearing held on July the 19th, the planning commission recommended seven to one to approve the request with the two conditions that are listed in your staff memorandum. The administration recommends approval with the same two conditions.
Thank you. Council, you've heard the reading of item number 10. Is there a motion, please?
Move to approve with existing conditions. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Can I have the next reading, please?
Item number 11 is an ordinance entitled in ordinance granting a specific use permit to allow a drive-through daiquiri shack or bar in a GCMD, general commercial, multiple-family dwelling district for property located at 5305 College Street in the city of Beaumont, Jefferson County, Texas. Crystal Carter has requested the specific use permit. This is an operational snow cone stand that is adding alcohol to their menu. At a joint public hearing held on July the 19th, the planning commission recommended eight to zero to approve. The administration recommends approval as well.
Thank you. Council, you've heard the reading of item number 11. Is there a motion, please?
So move for approval.
Second.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Yes, Mayor, please.
Thank you.
For clarification purposes to the public, we understand it's a snow cone stand, but in the public hearing, she did explain that alcohol would not be added to the snow cones. It'll be actually something totally separate. So I just want to make sure that's clear to the public, that they understand what we're approving.
Okay, all in favor of approving item number 11, please.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item pass. May I have the reading of item number 12, please?
Mayor and Council, item number 12 is an ordinance entitled in ordinance granting a specific use permit to allow a beauty spa salon in a GCMD II, general commercial, multiple-family dwelling II district for property located within the 6,500 block of Delaware Street in the city of Beaumont, Jefferson County, Texas. This space would be rented to hairstylists, nail technicians, and massage therapists, along with other related professionals. Sola Salon Studios is a chain with approximately 550 locations. At a joint public hearing held on July the 19th, the planning commission recommended eight to zero to approve the request with the three conditions that are listed in the staff memorandum. The administration recommends approval with the same three conditions.
Thank you.
Move to approve with existing conditions.
Second.
Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carrying. Item number 13, please.
Item number 13 is an ordinance entitled in ordinance issuing an amended specific use permit to allow condominiums in a GCMD II, general commercial, multiple-family dwelling II district located at 4515 North Major Drive in the city of Beaumont, Jefferson County, Texas. A joint public hearing held on July the 19th, the planning commission recommended eight to zero to approve the request. The administration recommends approval as well.
Thank you. You've heard the reading of item number 13. Is there a motion, please?
Move to approve.
Second. Councilmember Felschah? Any discussion, please?
Got a question, Mayor.
Yes.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Manager, so on North Major Drive and then all the way to where you turn the corner on 105 there, that entire area is just getting covered up with apartments, which is not necessarily a bad thing. But my concern is, is the amount of traffic that's pulling in and out of all those cross streets in this area. What, where do we go from here to see about doing another traffic study in that area to make sure we're keeping up with the proper number of lights and everything else that's necessary?
I'll defer to Mr. Barkowiac. He's working with Tech Dot quite a bit on this and can tell you where we are.
Tech Dot's actually conducting a corridor study for the entirety of Major Drive for the purposes of looking at not only the traffic now, but the traffic as it would exist with future developments to have an overall recommendation. So that's still in motion. We are working with them as well on Major and Northwest for that signal. The hangup right now there is there's potential development across the road from where Northwest connects into Major Drive. And there's still some uncertainty as to how that's exactly going to be developed because there's one small property where there's a house to be demoed that they're in discussion trying to acquire that house. If that house gets acquired by the developer, then there'll be a drive put into that commercial development that'll mirror the connection with Northwest, and it'll allow for a good signal configuration. Now, we're waiting for that because without that, the signal really looks odd and has some difficulty because of the roads not lining up properly. So that's kind of where we're at with the various conversations.
Thank you.
Any other discussion?
Yeah. May I have a question? On 105 and RFD, that neighborhood back there, I've got an email recently of families and citizens that were concerned with the traffic and overflow. Are we actually doing a traffic study in that area for that particular neighborhood as well?
We've referred those over to Tech Dot. As you know, Tech Dot owns the Highway 105, and they're looking at that 105 section as well for any recommendations on what to do.
Okay, if possible, can we, if we can, get an update on where they at with that particular neighborhood?
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? All in favor of approving item number 13, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion pass. Reading of the next item, please.
Mayor and Council, item number 14 is an ordinance entitled in ordinance amending Chapter 20, Article 20.03, Section 20.03.003 of the Code of Ordinances of Beaumont, Texas, by changing and amending speed limits and speed zone boundaries to the schedule for College Street, US Highway 90, providing for severability, providing for repeal, and providing a penalty. Tech Dot performed a traffic survey on College Street from Dallin Road to 23rd Street. The study indicated an excessive number of crashes compared to similar roadways in Texas. It is anticipated that lowering the speed limit will reduce the number of crashes, and the administration recommends approval of the changes.
Thank you. You've heard the reading of item number 14. May I have a motion, please?
Move to approve.
Second.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion?
I guess not.
Councilmember Durk.
They look at maybe some kind of way just having one speed limit for the whole distance? Because I mean, it's four different speed limits on here. That's going to equal to a, well, I don't know, it's going to equal to a lot of tickets. You're driving along with 35, then it skips up to 45. You're driving along, skips up to 50, then skips up to 55. What about if it was 40 miles per hour for that whole, that whole distance? Or does the state have some type of limitations on that?
Tech Dot looked at the traffic volumes and the wrecks, and this is what they came back with as a recommendation. So they did eliminate one of the adjustments along the way. It stays, well, I guess it still transitions the same number of times, but it stays at 40. Well, it doesn't. It stays at 45. It used to go from 45 to 50 at 23rd, and then it went from 50 to 55 down the road. Now it stays at 45 from just at that canal or that ditch, that DD six ditch that goes across close to I-10, and it stays at 45 all the way down until Dallin. And then it's 50 at Dallin out until West Calder.
It's still a pretty busy street. I would think that it would be better if it would stay at 40 miles per hour to like maybe Major Drive, and then it could skip up to highway speed. That would make sense to me.
Yeah, Major Drive's not at 40 the whole way, though.
Say it again?
Major Drive's not at 40 the whole way. It does transition.
That's what I was saying, like from the canal all the way up to Major.
You're saying 40 rather than 45?
Yeah. And then go up to 50 from there to the city limits. That way it's just two transitions instead of four.
We can propose it to Tech Dot if you want to drop it all the way down, and there's agreement on that.
So Bart, I have a question, please. So starting at 23rd, it dropped to 40 or 45?
At I-10, if you look at the map and flip to the second page, at the bottom small photo, that's at I-10. So right now and going forward, it's 35 miles an hour until you get to that DD six ditch. And then it jumps to 45. And then currently, right past 23rd, it goes to 50. Very soon after that intersection. But with this change, it'll stay at 45 all the way to Dallin Road. So the majority of the congested portion there with all the businesses, it'll be 45 miles an hour through that whole section. And then just past Dallin Road until West Calder, it'll be 50.
Well, because I had calls while I was Ward Four council member because there were several accidents at 23rd.
And wrecks down the length of College. And that's what Tech Dot was looking to, is they were looking into the conditions on the roadway and what they might do to improve safety, and this is what they came back with.
So is there any way we can make a recommendation? Because at College and 23rd, you're talking about a residential area at 45 miles an hour. That's...
Well, it's residential off of, on the side streets, yes, but not on the main street. We can bring it up to them. I don't, I don't know if you're going to hold traffic to 40 down that stretch, quite honestly, with the volume through there.
Mayor?
Sure.
Okay, so most of that section is in Ward Two, and I'm very familiar with it. And I think Tech Dot's recommendation is a good one. As far as the concern about wrecks at 23rd and College, that is regulated by a traffic light, is it not, at that intersection?
It is. What we found was a lot of the wrecks were people blowing the red light.
Okay.
And so then, you know, they were, people were coming off the side street, and they were getting hit.
So people blowing through a red light, whether it be 50 or 45 or 40, if they're going to run a red light...
It does. The lower the speed, the less chance of injury and accident. It does help improve safety.
Easier to stop.
Easier to stop.
So you're talking about Tech Dot's recommendation being to lower it from 50 at that section to 45?
Correct. It'll stay 45, you know, all the way down that length under this recommendation.
If at all possible, could you please check into it? Because coming from your residence, a residential area with cars traveling at a speed of 45 off of College Highway 90, and we already know that the testing has proven that there are accidents, then the data is already there. So if it could be lowered, I would like to see it lowered if all possible.
Okay, I can bring it up to them.
Thank you.
Do we want to move forward with this change and then look at lowering it further? Or you want to pull it until we get a response from Tech Dot?
I think we could move forward just asking them if they would consider lowering it, if that's okay with the rest of the council.
Yeah, I would agree with that in not having so many changes along the way. Like I said, 40 or 45 all the way from the, by you, all the way to Major Drive, and then once you get to Major Drive and cross Major, then they could up it to 50 or 55.
Okay.
Thank you.
Sure.
Any other comments? All in favor of approving item number 14, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carrying. Thank you. At this time, we have two discussion items. Mr. City Manager, can you please take us into the first discussion, please?
Yes, ma'am. The first discussion item is to review and discuss water and sewer rates. According to the city charter, city-owned utilities have to be self-sustaining. And so we have a water utilities fund. We also have a solid waste fund. And for the public, there's not anything we do in the city of Beaumont that I'm aware of except water and sewer and solid waste that pays for itself. Those are the, those are set up by the charter to be self-sustaining again. And they do pay for themselves. The water fund, which accounts for all water and sewer operations, including the water plant, the sewer plant, is all paid for by water and sewer charges on your water bill. It's based on utilization, and the water and sewer revenue, again, pays for the system. And the second discussion item we're going to have, which goes together, the solid waste fund accounts for all solid waste operations, garbage collection, operation of the landfill. And again, that's on your utility bill that you pay once a month. And there's a garbage rate that is basically a service fee. So that's set up, again, by the city charter. They're supposed to pay for themselves. So if you'll start the PowerPoint. So what we are proposing is a 5% increase to water and sewer rates. If the council approves this, you're not voting on it today, but the reason it's timely is because according to the city charter, I have to turn in the proposed budget to you by August the 15th. So I need to know at the end of this PowerPoint if you feel comfortable giving us the green light where we can put these numbers in the proposed budget. So if the council approves a 5% increase to water and sewer rates, that would generate an estimated $2.35 million for the water fund. So these are the increases that previous city councils have approved. And to my recollection, if you go back, I think they were all unanimous votes. You can check the record. You can see the councils have approved 8% increases, 7% increases. Look on that left column, because the fund needed it and the council wanted to see more money spent on water and sewer. I mean, you approved back-to-back, 8, 7, 7, 6, 6. There's some years, 2016, 2018, after Harvey, 2019, this year, 2021. We did not recommend an increase to you because this administration, we're not going to recommend an increase to you unless we really need it. So take some time and look. This gives you the previous fiscal years, what that ending fund balance has been. And in that last column, what that is saying, that if you did not increase water and sewer rates, then your fund balance is estimated to get down to 18%. Your goal in your financial policies approved in the budget is to be above 15%. And the city council's been very, I'd say proactive, giving staff the tools. And also, they approved $25 million in water revenue bonds in October of last year, 25 million. The city council also, a couple weeks ago, approved $13 million federal money earmarked for water and sewer improvements. That's a lot of money and more than we've ever seen. So we know we have a lot of work to do. We know there's challenges. There always will be. But we're making proactive steps to make needed improvements. And so without an increase, you're getting very close to 15%. And you'd have an estimated $3.4 million deficit. And we're recommending the 5% increase because the fund needs it. So to be self-sustaining, want the public to understand, an increase, you have increases with employee cost, you have increases with healthcare costs... You have increases with healthcare cost, with prescription drugs, with the chemicals we buy. You know what the cost of fuel's done over the last number of months? You know what it costs to buy a new car right now and a used car? Same thing with us. When we're buying equipment, vehicles, it's more expensive right now. So, our costs are going up and the five percent is needed. I'll be happy to answer any questions you have.
Councilmember, uh, Neil.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, Mr. Manager, so, we received one round of CARES Act money. And we're supposed to receive another one here in the next six months or so, right?
Next year, we think.
Could you use any of the CARES Act money to shore up this fund balance?
So, just to make a clarification, um, the CARES Act money was received over a year ago. You're talking about the American Rescue Plan funds that we received a month ago. So, we did allocate thirteen-point-three million dollars towards water and sewer projects out of the sixteen-plus million received. We should get another sixteen-plus million next May also. And it'll just be through the same process. We decide how we're gonna spend that sixteen-plus million next year. So, that's gonna be something that's gonna be brought to the council.
All right, so I guess my question, go back one slide. One more. So, it's gonna generate the two-point-three-five. So, I guess my question is, could you take two-point-three-five of that money and transfer it in here to cover the overage?
What, what fund are you talking about?
Into, into the fund balance from this other CARES Act money that we're gonna receive?
If I understand your question, the two-point-three-five million, that's gonna be generated from the five percent increase. That will automatically go into the water sewer fund.
I know what I'm saying is, can you put two-point-three-five million in there and not go up on the rate?
Where would you bring it from?
From the money that we're receiving.
The money we received, you've already authorized us how to spend it.
I know, but I'm saying we have more money coming.
Sure, if you wanted to do, if you wanted to wait till next May and do something like that, you could. As long as, as long as those funds are used for projects approved by the T-C-E-Q for drinking water or, um, and solid wastewater, then, so basically, clean water and drinking water, it has to be approved for those projects. So, I'm not sure if we could just use the two-point-three-five million dollars for general operations. It has to be something that's T-C-E-Q approved for clean water or drinking water.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Samuel?
Yes, um, Cal, do we have any idea? Uh, I know, uh, I, I recall about four years ago, we were doing, um, we had problems with overtime. Uh, that was being used to do, uh, uh, just continual flushing, the directional flushing on lines, as well as they were doing dead-end flushings. And it's my understanding at the time, we were doing that, uh, almost weekly. Am I, am I correct about that?
I think Mike Harris can come forward and tell you, we're doing more flushing today than we were five years ago.
Okay. Is that correct?
Yes.
So, with that, um, and are we on, are we doing scheduled flushings now, weekly?
We do weekly scheduled flushings.
Okay.
Uh, at various points around the city, we have roughly about fifty locations that we do weekly routine flushing on top of the dead-end main flushing that were required to by T-C-E-Q. Uh, we do not necessarily dedicate crews on overtime to go out and do flushing, but yet crews will do flushing on overtime if we get discolored water caused after hours.
Okay.
We do have a supervisor that is on call. The calls come to him. Uh, if he's where he can, he will go out and flush the hydrants himself. If there's a crew close by in the neighborhood working on a leak, something like that, then he'll turn it over to a crew to go up, open hydrants. Uh, these hydrants are usually left open overnight and we turn them off the next morning.
Okay. So, I guess my question now is, if we, uh, we've identified that as one of the ways of reducing the amount of discolored water, is that correct?
Correct.
And a part of that, uh, how does the, can we be doing more flushing in the areas of concern? And if so, does that directly impact the deficit that we're seeing? Will that cause the deficit to go up, increasing the need for additional funds? Or would that not be an equation that would be a part of that?
It should be an added cost if you did it. Be an added cost if you did it on overtime. And Bart Barcoeak and Mike Harris and, and others, we've interviewed, uh, two different groups, looking for that expert we told the council about, coming in to tell us how we could possibly do better as it relates to having less discolored water within the system. So, we're in the process of working through potential proposals to bring to the council. And if the council chooses to allow us to hire someone, that's what they'll be tasked to do. Meaning, it could include additional flushing, we're just not there yet.
Okay, well, that, that was the first thing that came to my mind when we began to talk about the increase of rates. How will that impact our ability to get a better handle on the water issues if we've identified the, the basis of the problem? Because I'm not, I know nothing about water. But I was told that, uh, the more flushing that's done, when I'm talking about flushing, not dead-end, not the dead-end flushing, but the directional.
Sure.
They said, the more that's done, then that decreases the chances of having discolored water in, in the system.
Sure.
So, my question is, if we are not giving consideration to increased rates, that directly impacts the ability to do the overtime, i- is that, is that correct? Or am I...
Well, I think, I think that's...
Kinda missing the point.
That's correct. I mean, if, if the council chooses not to move forward with the rate increase, which I, I've never seen the council do this in, in the years that I've been here. So, um, 'cause they've always said, look, we know what the fund needs to operate properly. So, you know, but to answer your question, if you get down close to fifteen percent in violation of your own goals, that's a problem. Second, when we borrow money, when we issue water revenue bonds, the reason we've worked so hard over the last five years to get the fund balance up, is it affects your interest rates when you borrow money, which means we have to pay more for it. This just allows the necessary revenue to operate the system effectively.
Mayor.
Thank you.
One moment.
Thank you.
Uh, Councilmember Getz, please, and then Councilmember Turner.
Ben Field.
Mike, before you leave, could you explain, you, you talked about flushing, and you and I had a conversation at lunch also about this. Isn't there a difference between the regular flushing that we are doing now and unidirectional flushing?
Yes.
So, so, would you explain what that difference is? I know we talked about it, but for the benefit of the council.
Sure. On the routine weekly flushing that we do, like I said, we do it every week. We've got about fifty locations. Uh, we've added more locations to the original plan, uh, within the last year because of the increase of discolored water caused. Uh, what the routine weekly flushing does, it's basically bringing in fresh water into the system. Um, as we spoke before, a lot of the cause of the discolored water, the manganese in the water, uh, we sequester it as the water ages, and the sequestration wears off and basically causes oxidation. So, by doing routine flushing, we're able to bring in fresh water, keep the fresh water in the lines to keep this from happening. Now, once the manganese gets in the lines, gets in the system, of course, it settles out. Directional flushing, what you're wanting to accomplish there, uh, you're wanting to isolate each section of line, basically make a dead end out of it, uh, at the end of the main, uh, preferably through a fire hydrant. You wanna open the fire hydrant and flush at a high volume, uh, like, uh, eight-hundred-and-fifty gallons per minute. A lot of it depends on what size of the main is you're flushing. Of course, a twelve-inch main, you wanna flush at a higher rate than a six-inch main. And basically, what you're wanting to accomplish is to pull the manganese, pull the sediments out of the line, flush it through the hydrant. Once you get that section flushed, get it pushed through, uh, you can open that section back up, isolate another section, and do the same thing. Uh, and that's a street-by-street process. It, it involves a lot of valves, a lot of turning valves on, turning valves off, isolating sections. Like I said, we've done some of it around Wellington, the Wellington place. We've had pretty good success with it. We were getting a little complaints from the apartments about sediment in the lines. We went over, did the directional flushing, and so far, we haven't heard any of that thing, any other complaints out, out of the apartments.
This, this, uh, unidirectional flushing that you just described, you, you believe it to be fairly effective of clearing the lines of discolored water?
Yes.
But we haven't been doing that type of program for the past several years.
No.
And why?
Uh, because naturally, why it hasn't been done in, in the past. Uh, we just looked into it, let's say, in about the last six months, laying out plans to where we can get started in certain areas, where the hotspots are. Uh, like I said, we, we generate our heat maps off of the complaints that are called in to tell us where the areas are most susceptible to the discolored water. Uh, that's when we go in there with the maps, look at the valves, look at the lines, see how we can isolate these sections and, uh, so we can go in and get started. Uh, one of the things that has kind of slowed us down on it is, we're currently waiting for the low well to come back in service. Uh, once the low well comes back in service, it'll increase the pressure in, in the west end area. That's one of the hotspots. It's one of the areas we're looking at doing the directional flushing first. Uh, once we get the pressure increased, it'll do more, it'll do a better job of pulling sediments out. Uh, right now, currently, we run, uh, probably around forty-six, forty-nine PSI on the west end. Uh, we're hoping to boost that pressure up into the mid to upper fifties once the well gets online. And like I said, it'll do a more thorough job of doing the directional flushing. And that's currently why we're, you know, so we're kinda going slow with it, waiting for this well to get back in service.
And, and I'm looking forward to that. It's probably a good thing that we are making these improvements to the low wells, that we are, because we just learned that we're not gonna be getting the Harvey funding for the hundred-million-dollar new water plant in the west end, which was supposed to be built in an effort to create additional pressures and redundancy in our water distribution system. But, uh, without that, we're gonna be relying on the low wells, is that right?
Sure.
Okay. Mr. Manager, uh, is there anything in our city charter that would prohibit the city from taking two-point-three-five million dollars out of our rainy day fund and put into our enterprise fund so that we could stay at the proper percentage level and not have to increase our water rates?
You could do that, but no one would recommend it, and here's why. The water fund by the charter and the solid waste fund transfers money to the general fund. So, what you'd be doing is, you'd have to find additional money in the general fund. And then next year, let's say you need additional funds or another increase, you've gotta catch up even more. So, then you may be going to the, the customer saying, hey, now we're gonna increase your rate eight percent or ten percent or twelve percent to catch up. So, that doesn't make any sense.
So, my question was, is there anything in the charter that prohibits it? And your answer was no.
It doesn't prohibit it, but I'll read to you what it says.
Uh, I've read the charter, Mr. Manager.
Yeah, okay.
Okay. And, and so, there's nothing that would prohibit it. And you talked about the need to find additional money. Well, we just found additional money to, I think, two-point-eight million dollars to buy and tear down that building. Uh, that's additional money that could have been used to transfer into the water fund, the enterprise fund, so that we don't have to go to our customers for a rate increase. So, I just wanted to make, make it clear for the citizens that there's no prohibition against that. Thank you.
Mayor, I'd like for our chief financial officer to explain why that would not make any sense further, because he deals with rating agencies all the time, he deals with auditors all the time. I don't want the public to go away and think that that's a good idea.
Thank you, Mr. Manager.
So, like mentioned earlier, um, when we go to the rating agencies to issue our water and sewer bonds, that's one of the things they look at, is the fund self-sufficient? Is it sustaining its own operations? Are you charging the correct fees for the services that you're providing? So, when you look at outside transfers, like a transfer from the general fund, that would weigh against what they recommend. Also, um, you know, the charter does say it needs to operate as a proprietary fund, and a proprietary fund is self-sufficient. So, you do want it to be self-sufficient. Also, you know, when we, when we get audited every year, we have to follow different sets of rules. We have to follow rules from the GASB, which is the Governmental Accounting Standard Board, the FASB, which is the Financial Accounting Standards Board, GAAP, generally accepted accounting principles, and standards issued by the AICPA, which is the American Institute of Certified Public Accountants. All of them say the same thing. They say that these proprietary funds, in this case, the water funds and enterprise fund, needs to be self-sufficient. And again, you could, you could transfer money in from the general fund to shore it up this year, but that doesn't mean that's gonna stop the gap. I mean, you can see that there's a three-point-four million dollar deficit budgeted in that fund. So, it doesn't solve anything. It, it, it's a, it's a temporary stop-gap loss for one year. But then, the year after fiscal year twenty-twenty-two, what are you gonna do? You can't continue to drain the general fund. So, like the, you know, like the manager said, instead of a five percent rate increase, you might be looking at an eight to ten percent rate increase to try to catch back up, get your fund balance where you need it. Also, you know, just keep in mind, I said this last week too, you know, the, the fund balance is looking at eighteen percent projected right now. But we have, you know, the Hurricane Laura fund, we have the COVID fund, we have the Harvey fund. All of those funds are in a negative fund balance, which means we've spent cash and have not received reimbursements from FEMA yet. As you saw with the MELDA, MELDA did not, you know, FEMA did not reimburse us for MELDA. So, we had to transfer funds into the MELDA fund from the water fund, from the solid waste fund, from the general fund to cover those expenses. We have declarations on the Harvey fund, the Laura fund, and the COVID fund, but there's no guarantee of how much payment we'll receive from FEMA. So, you do wanna add extra cushion on our fund balance in case FEMA doesn't come through on those, those three funds also.
Well, Todd, we were not reimbursed for MELDA because they said we did not meet our threshold.
Right.
That's not even a question in Harvey.
It's not a question, but there's a guaranteed match on all of those funds.
All right.
And so, the city will be out of pocket, we just don't know how much at this point.
Has anybody done a comparison of what a five percent rate hike would do, uh, with our water and sewer rates compared to our neighboring cities? Do we know how we would stand in that?
It's in the next part of the PowerPoint.
All right.
Councilmember Turner?
I noticed earlier, we said, out of curiosity, I think it would be a better and more proactive to flush prior to, until, instead of waiting to get a call. I noticed we said we didn't wanna do the overtime because we said we wanted to wait, you know, until we got the calls. Uh, Mr. Manager, Mr. Harris, me personally, I think it would be a good idea to kinda proactively flush prior to getting the calls instead of waiting to after, you know, we see, and this is one thing that's unfortunate. On Facebook, a lot of people complain about the brown water. And we look to see it being reported to three-one-one or emailed to three-one-one. But the truth of the matter is, the citizens are not emailing it to three-one-one. They're contacting direct council members, and they're complaining on social media. So, I understand that's the process that we operate within, but currently, the methods of the people are doing more communicating via social media. So, I would like to see us kinda get proactive and look at it that way. So, I mean, what's your guys' suggestion on that?
We are, we are... We are, we are flushing specific locations every week. What he's saying is, if you have a specific area, let's say a specific neighborhood or residents within a specific block or two that are calling, saying they have discolored water, then we'll send a crew out and flush and open hydrants within that area to move water and get the pressure up. So we are proactive every week. You're always going to have hotspots. Some days, we have zero calls out of forty-two thousand plus customers. Most days, we have less than ten people call out of forty-two thousand customers. So what's changed, the only thing that's changed is social media and people talking. That's what's changed. The people that have been here for thirty-plus years, go back and go talk to former mayors, this has been an issue for a long time. No one likes it, no one wants it. We were talking to an expert out of Denver yesterday. He deals with cities across the country that have this specific issue, okay? Especially cities with mang, a lot of manganese in their water, high contents. So we are proactive, but you're always going to have, when, when hotspots flare up, let's say you have a main water line break, or you have five or six breaks, which happen sometimes in the summertime. You may have five breaks in one day. That's, we've had that happen many, many times. So where you have those main breaks, and you're turning all valves and turning them back on, yes, you're going to have some issues, and crews are going to go out to that specific area and do more flushing. So that's what he means by, you know, we're going to go respond, because you respond to the hotspots. But I don't want, I mean, we are proactive because we're flushing in specific areas every week.
Yeah, and just furthermore, to piggyback on the quick, the, the request I just made, I understand we have the main spots we're currently targeting, but even the spots that haven't been reported, you know, I kind of rather look at trying to cover more ground prior to getting a phone call. Uh, another thing is the low well, I noticed this came up again, and I know we projected that on the twelfth of last month, this well will be back up. So, you know, with, that, with it being a priority and it being able to really be beneficial, I kind of like to see, again, you know, like where we at on it, you know, what's going on, what's the holdup, what's the update? Because this low well is consistently coming up, and it's been coming up. And I want to know if it's that important, kind of where are we on it? And what, what are our steps to actually get in there, where we can actually have it up?
We've got a thirty-six inch valve that we're trying to get installed. We're waiting on a coupling. The coupling actually came in today, and we're also having to cut that thirty-six inch pipe. So we had to work, find a contractor that could cut that pipe to the proper length to install that coupling. So right now, we're thinking maybe by the end of this week, uh, weather permitting, we should be able to get that, that valve in. Um, unfortunately, also, we exercised well two this week, and the motor winding's burned on that. So we've got that motor in the shop being rewound. That's going to be about six days, uh, to get that motor wound. I'd like to have well one and two available when we come up. So if we have any issues, we don't shut down again. The goal being, when we come up, to stay up and not come up, shut back down, come back up. So, um, we're looking at end of next week. I understand, I, I mean, believe me, we've been trying like heck to get this thing up. It's just construction issues. So you, you buy the valve, you have the valve, you dig up the one in the ground, you find problems in installing it, and we're working through those problems. So that, that's where we're at right now.
And I got one last one. I noticed from twenty seventeen to twenty twenty, it wasn't an increase during those three years. Is there a particular reason? Why?
We didn't need it.
Okay.
And it was after, after Harvey, and then we had Melda, then COVID. But we only recommend increases when we need it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Felsch.
Thank you, Mayor. My question was answered, uh, during the discourse between Kyle and Todd and Councilman Getz.
Councilman Samuel.
Were you through with the presentation?
Not as it relates to solid waste and then a comparison with other nearby cities and cities our size.
Okay, so, but as far as water?
Yes.
I still have a question.
When I'm, okay. Well, I did not, I, I hope it wasn't taken that I was insinuating that we had stopped doing what we previously did. But it was my understanding, because I've seen over in one area, uh, off of Helbig Road, I've seen them do, continuing to do the flushing, and it's re, routine flushing. And I, I did stop to talk with the worker, and I was explaining, they explained to me that they've been doing the continual flushing, the, uh, directional flushing as well as the dead end flushing. Um, and I just wanted to make sure that that program was not going to be impacted or how it would be impacted if we did not do the rate increase, because we have gone down, uh, before, a- am I correct?
Yes, sir.
So I, I understand. I just wanted to make sure it was understood that my, uh, question was not insinuating that we had stopped doing what was necessary to reduce the brown water.
Thank you. Councilmember Getz?
You know, next to Councilmember Samuel, I'm now the most senior member on this city council. Been here since two thousand and eleven. And I do not recall the volume of complaints for the first five years of discolored water that we seem to be having now. So I understand, uh, the manager's comments that we've always had this problem. Social media was available two thousand and eleven, and maybe it's being used a lot more now. But I encourage us to continue to develop a systematic, unidirectional flushing program to go block, 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 and provide maintenance to these lines throughout the city. I'm told that this was done in the past. I don't, I don't work in the water department, I can't prove it, I don't know. But if it was, and we didn't have a lot of discolored water complaints in the past, then maybe that's the reason. So I'm just trying to put two and two together here and get an answer for the citizens as to why they continue to be asked to pay more and more for brown water.
Mayor, Mayor?
Councilmember Samuel?
Yes. Well, I have been here, and maybe you did not see, well, I'm not going to speak to that. I will just say, I know we are not experiencing as much brown water in Ward Three as we had ten years ago. So I know that that has been an improvement, but just because there's a reduced amount of brown water anywhere, doesn't mean it's acceptable. We have to continue to try and find a solution for reducing that as I see it. And from others that I've asked about it in other cities, that's a problem across the country. It's not just unique to Beaumont, but as I understand it from a contractor, for some reason, in this area, there's more magni, is it magnesium?
Magnesium.
Manganese? Manganese. There, they find more manganese in the su, in the Texas region than anywhere else. So that's what, one of the things that we're dealing with. So it might not have been as bad in Ward Two, but it was much worse in Ward Three than it is now. So thanks.
Councilmember Doria?
Uh, yes, uh, Mr. Manager, thank you, Mayor. Um, just to piggyback on what Councilman Turner said, a lot of time, we're getting calls and emails from citizens about the brown water, the sewage in their house and things like that. And that makes it, hopefully, understand why. Of course, I, I understand you wouldn't ask for increase if you didn't need it. But why we're questioning, because we have to go back to the citizens. They want to know why are they getting an increase and I'm having all these problems? That's, and, uh, that's why, that's why I have questions. So, one other thing, have you ever asked for an increase when, when they were having problems like this before?
You always have problems. Meaning, every city in America has problems with their infrastructure. If you're older than, if your city's older than twenty, thirty years old, or a hundred and eighty something years old, you have issues constantly with streets, with drainage, with water, with sewer. And it's a matter of how much work do you want to do? How much is the public willing to pay? How much are they willing to pay? Water and sewer rates. They could pay a lot more, and we could do a lot more work. Meaning, you could hire more crews and do a lot more work. Or the problem's going to go away if you did that? No. You want to maintain the, the system in good order so you could provide potable water to the public and provide proper sewer to the public. People, we have forty-two thousand plus customers, forty-two thousand. We track every day, Monday through Friday. How many sewer problems do we have? That are our responsibility? How many stoppages out there? And we track it every day. How many water line breaks do we have? How many repairs did we make every day? And so we know how we're doing. So the highest number I think we had in the last two or three years, we had some major breaks. I think it was less than four hundred people, that's a lot, called. That's one percent of customers in the city of Beaumont. Most days, we have less than ten people call, saying they have discolored water. The highest day in years, one day, I think it was three hundred and maybe fifty, okay? Less than one percent. That's, that's a lot of people. We don't want any discolored water. We have discolored water in this building about once a month. You know, we do the best that we can, but if you have a break and water's not moving, and you have a lot of manganese in the system that settles down in your pipes, you're going to have discolored water. So to answer your question, the challenges never go away. If you doubled the amount of money, if you spent, instead of fifty-three million dollars a year on water and sewer, and you spent over a hundred million, the phone calls, social media, and stuff like that, it's not going to go away. You do more work, and you change out more main water lines, and you change out more sewer lines, but you're still not going to have a perfect system. It would, meaning, you could double the amount of money and double it for ten years in a row, and you're still, you'd make a lot of improvements, but you're not going to get to that point where you don't have any challenges. So the people that have problems, again, they need to call three one one. What we do is we go out to your house or your business. We check the main line, let's talk about sewer for a second. We check the main line. Is it flowing? If it's flowing, the problem, and the public doesn't like to hear this, probably at least fifty percent of the time, the problem's on their line. I just, I spent twenty-five thousand dollars at my house in the last two years. It happens, meaning, if the problem's on your line, on your side, you got to fix it, or otherwise, I mean, it's not going to get to the main line, there's a big problem. If it's our responsibility, we're going to fix it. That's why they're paying those bills, that's why they're paying the charges. So a lot of people, it's, it's a tough situation, because a lot of people don't have the money to fix their sewer line. And we even talked, you know, we set aside, the council did some federal money earmarked for that purpose, and we just didn't have, we had some renters come forward, but we didn't have many owners come forward. Um, so that was something we tried that didn't work very well. But, but to answer your question, I mean, it's all based, it's the same thing with property taxes. People pay property taxes for streets and drainage, and it goes also towards policing fire. How much is the public willing to pay? You could do more streets if you had more revenue. So you do is, you try to make incremental progress and make the system better. And when, when people call us with a sewer problem, we're there in a timely manner. We're there, we assess the situation, if it's our issue, we fix it. Otherwise, we say, look, it's on your side, and we go on. They don't like to hear that. We cannot go on private property by law. Okay? So I hope that maybe gives you some background, but, um...
Thank you.
I have one question, Mayor.
Councilmember Neil?
So I'll keep it, I'll keep it quick. Uh, going back to one of the comments Councilman Getz made, talking about, you know, more complaints than y'all had back several years ago. And so one of the other things that I've noticed is that we talk about our, uh, pressure being down a lot more, and that's because of a couple of different reasons. One, low being down, two, having issues at the, uh, water towers. And then, but one of the other things is, we've added a lot of industrial facilities onto our system in the last several years, which, what kind of role do you think that's doing as far as taxing, taxing our system and just being able to produce the amount of water that's necessary?
Not much. Uh, most of those facilities, yeah, we provide some potable water to them, but they're getting their raw water from LMBA, uh, in most cases. So people need to... These, these aren't excuses, these are, these are facts. Go look it up. I'm talking to the general public, just trying to give you some background. Harvey was tough, Melda was tough. Those are two of the wettest storms in the top ten in U.S. history. Two of the wettest storms in U.S. history, go look, over the last one hundred years. So Harvey, as y'all know, knocked out our pump station. Thank goodness the council voted six to one to try to move it away from the Natures River. And then it knocked out the pumping capability at Low. So before Harvey, the city was getting, this again for the public, getting primarily most of your water out of the Natures River. But you're also getting every day a certain percentage of three, from two basically ground wells, groundwater up in Hardin County that we've had for a long time. Pumping water in that was mostly servicing going down, say, one oh five, out to Major Drive, the west end of Beaumont. So you, when your pressure, it was blending the two waters out of the Natures River, which is surface water, and then the groundwater up in Low. But blending that water, and you had better pressure across the entire city of Beaumont. So with Low being down, you're pumping from the Pine Street Plant all the way out across the entire city of Beaumont, and it's, it's been difficult. So, you know, been working really hard, staff has, to get Low back up. Um, I'm, I'm pleased with where we are with the work that Bart Barcoeak, Molly Villarreal, Mike Harris, and all their staff are doing. I think, you know, it's, it's been very difficult, but they've made a lot of progress over the last, say, two plus years. So I think we're definitely on the right track. And when Low gets back up, um, I think we'll even be in a better situation. We did make application to the state of Texas, to the General Land Office for that hundred million dollar new water plant, and, um, it was not awarded. And there will be a round two, and we'll see what, see what happens there. We don't think they're going to approve anything near a hundred million we may get. It'll go through the Council of Government, Southeast Texas Regional Planning Commission, and, you know, if we're awarded, it'll be much less. So that's going to be another consideration for the council. Do we still try to do that? Do, or do we get Low back up and see how it works and continue to make improvements out there? Um, to, you're never going to have a, a fail-proof system, but you want to put in, again, the best, uh... You make improvements and prioritize your projects to better ensure that the public has potable water. And again, the council, the previous council voted six to one for a new pump station, and we're close to getting approval on that project, we think. That's a twenty million dollar project, Bart?
Yeah, I think it's around twenty-two right now, by the estimate.
And then separate from that is a new line, as y'all know, coming down Pine Street, so...
Yeah, to, to Councilman Neil's, uh, question, though, we're not maxed out at the Pine Street Plant, so we're not being overtaxed by demand and that causing low pressures. It's just that you're pumping into a system that's got a lot of pipes that are older. We can't overpressure coming out of the Pine Street Plant, or we'll blow a water line. So we hold about seventy-two PSI out of the Pine Street Plant consistently. And where we're having the, the lower than normal, normal being when Low is up, those pressures are on that periphery on the west end, uh, because it's just further from the Pine Street Plant, and you're going through a lot of pipes to get there. Uh, but the solution to that is getting Low back up. We're not being over, overdrawn by any one customer, causing us to have lower pressure.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. City Manager, I think that concludes our first discussion item. Can you take us into our second item, please?
Yes, ma'am. Okay, so, we're proposing a one-dollar increase to the garbage rate from nineteen dollars and seventy-five cents to twenty dollars and seventy-five cents a month. Uh, the last increase was back in fiscal year twenty-twenty. It will generate an estimated four hundred thousand dollars in additional revenue for the solid waste fund. Same issue, when we, when we need an increase, we come to you and recommend it. When the fund, for example, same issues, you have employee costs, healthcare costs going up, fuel costs, equipment costs. Operating expenses continue to go up and this operation is funded by that garbage rate, by that, that service rate. Previous councils have approved, you can see everywhere from three-point-four percent to eight-point-two percent. Again, it's based on what does the fund need? How much revenue does the fund need? And, uh, if the council approves this, again, it's going to be twenty dollars and seventy-five cents. That is a, you're going to see comparison with some other cities. I will tell you that we provide, I'm not aware of any of the services provided in area, other area cities to the same level that we do. Meaning we pick up your garbage, we pick up white goods, which are appliances, furniture, yard waste. We do it all once a week with different crews coming by your house. And they do an unbelievable job. Uh, Councilman Samuel will tell you that fifteen years ago, lot more complaints. We rarely get complaints with, you know... But, you know, forty-two thousand plus customers again. They do an excellent job, they work really hard. And, um, next slide. So this shows you, again, your, your goals are to have at least fifteen percent in the fund balance. And things were really good in this fund after a storm. You have so much activity and people using the landfill, your revenue goes up quite a bit. And, uh, expect, well, I'm at the landfill specifically. So when the fund is not, when the fund's doing well, again, we don't ask for an increase. The last thing you want to do is charge the citizens more unless it's needed. So in this case, without an increase, your fund balance is going to get down to an estimated fifteen percent, which again, your goal in the financial policy is to be at least fifteen percent. And so that's why we're recommending the five percent. Next slide. Take some time, you could look at this. That highlighted in yellow, that average customer that uses six thousand gallons of water, their bill go up a little over three dollars a month. And you can see how those rates compare with area cities and other cities across the state, maybe with our population.
Any discussion, any questions?
So Mayor, um, with two new council members, the way this works is you're not voting on it today, but we need to know if there's agreement to move forward and put these numbers in the budget. Because, again, it has to be turned in to you by August the fifteenth. You're not voting on today, but when you do, normally the rates, the new rates are effective October the first, the start of the new fiscal year. And... Just need some direction from the council. We don't want, we didn't want to be presumptuous, it wouldn't have been proper to plug in numbers without talking to the council first. So we don't want to do that, but we do need at least some direction today because we'll be putting that together over the next couple of weeks, finalizing the proposed budget.
So, does anyone object to it moving forward with the proposed plan?
And if they do, I mean, uh, Councilmember Getz has probably voted on these at least seven times in the last ten years. He's never voted no, so I don't know what the difference is. But at the same time, if, if, if anyone's opposed to it, if you'd like for us to do something different in that fund, please tell us what it is.
Mayor.
You ask me a question?
City manager, just to summarize this, I, I, I think we all agree that we want to continue providing, uh, the basic services to our citizens, which are most important, to continue increasing the quality of our water and sewer. None of us want to see, uh, a rate increase unless it's just absolutely necessary. None of us want to do that. But, in, in simplistic terms, this is a cost of living increase is what this is. It's just, it's keeping up with the cost of doing business. It's not, uh, it's just necessary for us to, to continue providing the services. If we don't do this increase, then we start falling behind. And it compounds the problem next year when we come right back to the same place. And this is pretty common, there's been a few years when we haven't had to do this. But overall, it seems like pretty can, on a regular basis, we have to do an increase as a cost of living increase just to keep up with doing, the cost of doing business. And transferring the money from the general fund, which I, I, I understood the question by Councilman Getz, and that was my question. But again, you do not recommend that because of where that puts us in regardings to our rating, that this fund should be self-sufficient, self-funding.
Yes. That's correct. Everything you said is correct.
Also, and what it does, I mean, we're gonna, we're gonna rob Peter to pay Paul if we're taking it from the general fund. And then the next year, we look at the general fund, then we have to replace those dollars, so.
That's correct.
Well, um, it appears that we only just have one, one council member that opposed, and so I would suggest that...
Quick question before we go into that. The option that Councilman Neil suggested earlier, we didn't really get too far into that as far as to, to next year, we have that money coming in, maybe earmarking that money. We didn't really...
It's supposed to, I think it's supposed to be for specific projects, so...
Right, it's, it's, that, that money is really only for infrastructure projects that are approved by the T C Q for clean water or drinking water infrastructure projects. It's not for day-to-day operations.
Would flushing fall under that?
I'm sorry?
Flushing. Would flushing fall under the T C Q? Well, that's day-to-day. So...
Mayor.
And, and all of the, and all the, um, like, the main rehabs, that's all done out of the C I P program. But the flushing is done out of the operational.
But if all possible, if we, if we move forward on this and we see that we can go back and take that two-point-five million dollars from that sixteen million that we're, that's coming in, we can go back and move two-point-five million from the money that's coming in to replace what we're doing at this time. Could we? After the fact?
The way I read the rules right now, it doesn't qualify for that.
Okay. Thank you. Councilmember Getz?
So, if you're getting money from the American Rescue Fund and you're using it to pay on certain water and sewer infrastructure projects, that's money that you don't have to take from the Water Revenue Enterprise Fund for those infrastructure projects, right?
But the infrastructure projects are paid for out of water and sewer revenue bonds that are issued. They're not, they're not, they're never paid out of water and sewer fees.
Okay, so only operational costs are paid out of the fees?
Well, the debt service is paid. What he's trying to say is that the additional thirteen million dollars that y'all earmarked for water and sewer, that's additional capital expenditures that you normally would have borrowed for, right? So, we didn't replace what we were doing from an operational standpoint. We're doing more capital work. We're changing out more main sewer lines, more main water lines throughout the city. So, um, what that federal money allowed you to do is just do more capital work out there that's needed within the system. At, at lift stations, there's lift station repairs in there. There's a lot of additional sewer work across the city. So, it's basically speeding up capital work that we wanted to do above and beyond the twenty-five million dollars that you, you issued in water revenue bonds last October. Just allowed you to do more work out there within the system, which was great because you don't have to pay that back. It's a, I mean, we're all paying for it as, as taxpayers. At the same time, this is money that went to cities across the United States based on a formula. And we got sixteen million dollars in the council earmarked thirteen for water and sewer work.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Councilmember Neil?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, back to answer Councilman Turner's, uh, question that he had. The, I mean, the main objective would be to have your rate meet your expenditures. And then, but every year, your expenditures goes up. So, if you were to take the, the money like what I was recommending whenever Todd, uh, responded, it would get you out of a short-term bond. But next year, you're going to be coming back and, and asking for a much larger rate increase. So, what they've been doing for years, what it appears, this is my first time to see that slide, is just a steady increase every so many years as needed.
Any other comments? Okay, thank you. At the close of the city council meeting, the council will hold an executive session to consider matters related to and contemplating our pending litigation in accordance with section five-five-one dot zero-seven-one of the governmental code, claim of L and L General Contractors and claim of Christopher Shaw. Now's the time, if anyone would like to speak. If you have not already done so, please fill out the green form to the back of the room. Bring it to the clerk. She will call your name when it's time for you to speak. We would appreciate it if you keep your comments to three minutes. The green light will come on and the red light will come on when it's, your time is up.
Um, Steve Hoffman, seventy forty-five Bloney Street, Beaumont, Texas.
Again, Madam Mayor, members of council, uh, I guess this is a continuation of our previous speaking moment. I'm still back on the, uh, USS Texas. I think that's a, that's a big item for us. We're, we're a town that lives on museums and history. That's a lot of what we got to offer in our, our background in lumber, our background in the oil industry. And now we could bring, if we could bring the Texas as part of that, that's, uh, the last of our, that's a good thing. I guess I'm biased because somewhere in the nineties when things were tough, people were selling memorabilia. And I bought a memorabilia of the USS Texas. It was a commemorative Navy Day, uh, postcard that was sent in nineteen thirty-three with a picture of Teddy Roosevelt's etching on it and a picture of the, the ship under, under steam in the ocean right now. It's, it's a cool thing. And I think that's, reminds me of what we could have in Beaumont with the real thing, if y'all could make it happen. And, uh, it sounds like people want to make it happen here for us. It just, do we want it? I mean, I don't understand, I haven't heard the reasons, one way or the other, that it's a pros and cons. But I wish y'all would talk about it and think about it. I, I don't, but you mentioned the people right now, grocery stores out and about, they all are for it. And I'm, everybody I've talked to said they're for it. I'm not, wasn't, wasn't marketing it, I was just talking about it just for the moment. And that, I think it's, I, that's going to have grounds well, if you get behind it. So, think about that. Maybe that the, the building and the, the grounds there could be tied into that. And that would then justify people's anger or upset about the building cost and what's going to happen to it. So, you know, let's get smart, operate a little smart about things. I mean, being on the water and opening the waterfront up is a good idea. I just kind of reached the point of this property may not be the best place. Maybe there's something else. You know, so that was just kind of where I was coming to. But I think, listening today, I think it can be done. But, you know, it needs to kind of be a, a good joint effort and to show them that, that Beaumont wants it. You know, right now, it's like, well, we'll take it if nothing else is going on. And that doesn't sound like a good thing to try to promote, to give somebody to, to bring a ship to you, fund a lot of the cost. And, uh, which will definitely, you put a sign out on the freeway coming into Beaumont, you're going to have people stopping. You know, just when the kids see it alone, the ki- kind of stuff. So, I mean, you know, it, it's, it's a good thing and it, it puts Beaumont kind of on a spot because we're going to hold a, a, a jewel in, in the Texas history. So, I mean, that'll be in Beaumont, that's something we can be proud of. And we need things we can be proud of right now, we're not talking about brown water. On brown water, I did find an advertisement, excuse me. Of all places, San Francisco Plumbing Company was advertising about how they could help you with your brown water problem and all the filtering system they can put in and everything else. So if San Francisco's got it, Beaumont's not that, that off. Anyway, I'll let you have your time back.
I think it, is it, is it Maje? Maje McMillan, thirty-three ninety-five Holland, Beaumont, Texas.
Oh, how y'all doing today? Uh, I pay child support in this city and my child support is two eighty-seven a week. And I've been trying to get in touch with the attorney general to go to court, to talk back to a judge, to get a job so I can go back to work. But my background that the police ruined on my life is so bad, I can't pay child support. I don't even know where to go get a job at that pays just child support, two eighty-seven a week. So that's why I'm up here now, trying to figure out where you go back to work at, that just pay two-hundred-and-eighty-seven dollars a week, just the child support every week, so that I can have my life back for my children, to be with them. That's it. I pay everything else I heard up in here.
Thank you, sir.
Rodney Denclaw, forty-one oh five Chason Avenue, Beaumont, Beaumont, Texas.
I don't see him. Oh, there's Rodney.
Good afternoon, Council, and, uh, congratulations to Mayor Mutant.
Thank you.
Uh, I'm up here today because a few weeks ago, I came up here to, uh, ask about the hydraulic, uh, chair at the Alice Keith Pool. Uh, it has not been fixed. No one's came and looked at it. Once again, they, they were notified two years ago when the pool was open. And then last year was a pandemic, so it's been two years that's been broken. The main supervisor, the main lifeguard has requested that it get fixed. There's three disabled people that go up there, me, my wife and another lady. The main lifeguard says he knows a couple of people that want to go up there that have a disability, but they can't because that chair ain't working. So I'm back here requesting again that y'all talk to whoever y'all got to. Because swimming, swimming does us good, helps us, you know, we don't got very much mobility. But, you know, when we're swimming, we're using all of our limbs and stuff, so we, that's good exercise. So I'm urging y'all to please get that fixed before the pool closes. Thank you.
Thank you.
The Pharaoh Richard, um, fifty-two seventy-five Park View, Park View Drive, Beaumont, Texas.
I hesitate to sleep. For many reasons. It's been a weird, weird life experience. For many reasons, it's been a weird, weird life experience since I took on the first homeless client, Cheyenne Monks. She was murdered on Pine Street. She was raped for three days. She was burned, and she was lied upon that she broke into her house with a deadbolt on it. Since that time, I've helped about a hundred homeless people under the bridge and at some other place with tents, sleeping bags, and chairs. Literally fifty have sold the tents and the sleeping bags for five dollars. This gentleman, just now, just negative transference. So for me, I'm stuck. I've been a social worker for twenty years in Los Angeles. I work with suicidal homicidal children. I came to Beaumont to take care of a mother who had a stroke. I came for two weeks. I've been here eleven years. I left my job, I left my house, I left my husband, I left my business in downtown LA, where we made fifty thousand dollars a week to come here and make zero dollars to care for a parent. I went to Magic Johnson twenty years ago. I approached him. I'm a member of the Screen Actors Guild. I'm a member of ACTA. I need you to build me a shelter for runaways in Hollywood. It took him one week to build a five-hundred-bed shelter. I come here every day, every Tuesday. This will be my last one. I'm tired. I've been shot at. My car, my tires have been slashed. I don't know what I stepped into because of Cheyenne and what happened to her. The other lady who was a witness, she's in jail. I'm followed every day by police. I've gotten five trespass warrants in two days. Everywhere I go, I stepped on the grass to give a lady a cot and a sleeping bag. The gentleman said private property, just like you mentioned, sir, you can't step on it. I got a trespass warrant for giving someone a sleeping bag. So all I said is this. I went to talk to the gentleman yesterday at Con's, the old building, whomever cares. It's a hundred thousand square feet. Twenty thousand is going to a Latino company to open up a grocery store. The other eighty thousand is available. I would do what I can to write a grant for the city. The gentleman wants six million for the building. It's a hundred thousand square feet. He wants sixty thousand a month for rent. I will write a grant for the city. I have a friend who wrote a grant in Los Angeles, a twenty-million-dollar grant, and the owner only paid one dollar for twenty million dollars worth of property. I will write the grant. Brother Craig Johnson from Compro Tax is going to help me. He's going to send me to TSU for the class. Because the gentleman at Texas Agriculture, he retired, and they help you there as well. Meaning what? You have the ability to service every homeless person here that's under the bridge and at some other place for less than ten dollars a day. So that's all I want to say, and thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
And that's six million dollars. You guys have a slush fund, why not help people? You worrying about dogs, you worrying about concrete, why not worry about people?
Christopher Matthews, thirty-eight seventy-five North Major Drive, Beaumont, Texas.
How y'all doing? I'm back. I wanted to, I was sitting back there listening to the issues about the water and sewer y'all were talking about. And I wanted to ask a couple of questions along the lines of what you brought up, Councilman Neil and Councilman Turner. You mentioned about possibly getting another sixteen million dollars of American Rescue Aid Fund, whatever y'all got. And me listening to it, basically, I get what y'all were trying to do. Y'all seeing if there's a way to tap into that to help our water and sewer systems here. And I had a question. From what he said, Todd said that the way the rules are, how are you supposed to use that money? Is it possible, with the well being down in Hardin County, is it possible to drill another well and maybe allocate some of those funds towards that, being a new project? Would it fall into that category? Also, I know that the City of Groves, I actually worked on that project with Placo Plumbing and helped them. The City of Groves had a grant some years ago, this was like two thousand and eleven, to replace all the sewer lines, because a lot of their sewer lines had the clay, the clay lines and the old iron lines. And there's a lot of rust and breaking in the lines and stuff like that. And I was wondering, is it possible that maybe there's issues like that with some of our water lines? And it's obvious that y'all spoke of the manganese being a composition in our dirt, and that's why we have so much of that in our water. So maybe some of that, what y'all were talking about, the rinsing, that's what settles and gets caught up in there. So is it possible that maybe y'all consider maybe a project of redoing some of the water lines? And maybe some of those funds could be allocated to that as a new project? Just some questions I'm just asking. And the reason I bring up drilling another well is possibly, so I've got some knowledge about drilling wells, and I've actually had some experience about actually drilling some water wells. When you, the further you drill down, you start to get into like some fine sediment and rock, some really, really, really fine rock. And that actually helps as a, as a filter, you know? And I'm asking about drilling another well and could y'all possibly drill deeper to get some fresher, cleaner water, where you won't have so much of the manganese and the sulfur and stuff that gets caught up in it? That's all I want to know. Just wanted to ask those questions to give you something to think about. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, I cannot answer his questions. I will just say that he brings up some very good points, valid points. And Chris, I'd encourage you to visit with Bart Barco, we act, he'll come back in a minute afterwards. I appreciate you coming forward.
Dana Rothenberger, thirty-eight ninety East Lynnwood Drive, Beaumont, Texas.
All right, looks like we are getting a new park, which I ain't mad about. I like green stuff, you know, I like to ride my bicycle. All of this stuff about the water and the sewage. I want to point out that we voted today to add more sewage and water responsibility to what we already have with building new apartments out on the periphery of our city. Now, maybe instead of just saying yes to every condo and apartment out there on the periphery, maybe we should do something to try to get them a little closer to home, a little closer to that new park we're going to have, a little closer to all the nice parks we already have and things we can enjoy. And I just want to say that, you know, every time we drive down Beaumont, which is downtown, my favorite place to ride my bike, because you don't have to look, you can just ride your bike and have a good time. Every empty parking lot that I pass used to be a beautiful building. Every empty parking lot that you pass when you leave here today, look at it and think of what used to be here. And think about what made us give up on Beaumont, on Beaumont's downtown so much that we're going to invest on the periphery and look at everything we have built for ourselves and be so happy to tear it down and then not finish the job. If we're going to have bathrooms at this new park, can they at least be unlocked so that people can use them? Are we going to have that place for someone to get a cold drink? Because unless you go to the park and you pack your, pack your ice chest, get the kids out there, you get everything unloaded, you start having a good time, and little Johnny has to go to the restroom, or little Johnny needs a drink of water, and you forgot that one thing, you're going to have to load back up, get in the car, and drive all the way to the other side of MLK to get that. And if you're at the event center, which is right across the street from that, you still have to get in your car because you've got to cross seven lanes of traffic. Please, think about all the people you want to use this stuff when you're building it. Think about the end result. Are they going to be able to comfortably do it? Is it going to be an enjoyable day out with the family? Is it going to be so good that they're going to want somebody else to come by? And the gentleman I was sitting next to earlier made an excellent point. Wise Park has beautiful oak trees to sit underneath, but you know what it doesn't have? A splash park, and we already own that. So I just want everyone to think about that as we're going forward and doing all that stuff. And let's stop building outward and start growing within from where we already have great, great, great things. Thank you.
Eric Bender, twenty-seven seventy IHT in East Beaumont, Texas.
I'm back. I understand that emails don't count. If someone wants to voice their opinion about something that city council wants to do, emails don't count. Only letter mail, is that correct? No, I can't ask questions, but, and if there's a letter in the mail, it needs to have your address, your name, your phone number. It needs to have your information. You need to validate your response. So for people who are concerned about things, I believe I understand that clearly, that emails are not being considered as a vote or an opinion by council members and our city leaders. I think it's helpful for the public to understand that because there's all those little email contact things when you, when you go to the city website, but you don't, you don't get that bit of information when you look at that website. It's hard to swallow an increase in one department or two departments, like we were talking about today, when the city has excess money in their slush fund. It's hard to stomach that, honestly. It's really hard to stomach that. And I know that, that you have good intentions to develop whatever that means, the riverfront. What I saw the day we had this presentation was nothing, really. It just doesn't look like there's a plan, and it's disappointing. So I don't see the validity of a, of an increase in, in water bills and sewer bills when we have money to throw around that comes out of the general fund to do stuff like this. It doesn't make sense to me that we can do that. And it doesn't make sense the way I've seen, there was a gentleman in the back here that was almost arrested a number of times because when it rained, his mother was, ninety-five-year-old mother was literally cut off from the rest of the world by deep water. And one day, hours after the rain, I went by where his mother lived. I found the place, not that I was looking for it. I was so blown away by the problem. And why didn't we as a community, and why did we not see that as an emergency? It took over a year to get that fixed. And these people that are having sewer problems, I understand sewer lines collapsed. And I understand sometimes it's not the city's problem. But why don't we treat this like an emergency when we have money in the general fund? We can use it to subsidize other departments. This is about people. You govern people.
Thank you.
Holly Peterson, eight twenty-five Norwood, Beaumont, Texas.
I'm sorry you have to hear from me again, but I just wanted to quickly add that, Mr. Hayes, the comments that you made about the protocol and what happens with the city when people have sewage issues was not my experience nor the experience of my neighbors who were having problems at the same time that I was having problems. I did call three-one-one multiple times. There are many wonderful people who work at the water department. I had sweet gentlemen who gave me their personal cell phone numbers and came out on their Father's Day to try to help us. I will not deny that. But the problem was y'all's line. And you would not hear that. Plumbers, no one would hear that until I spent thousands of dollars to prove that there could not be a problem on my line. I also take exception, Mr. Hayes, when you say that there's a social media problem. At the time that this was happening to our family, we were in a hotel, and I was watching city council at that time because I was concerned about the water. And I heard you say, "We don't have a water problem, we have a social media problem." I didn't post on social media what was going on with our, our family. I was trying to go through the proper channels. A few weeks ago, my good girlfriend had water coming out of her pipes that looked like Coca-Cola. She called three-one-one. No one had yet responded. She needed to give her kids baths. She posted on social media and immediately, Mr. Turner, thank you, Mr. Neil, thank you, checked on her and took care of it immediately. The reason people are going to social media, when I had my problem, I eventually called Mr. Gutz, who's my councilman, who came to my home and checked on us. The reason people are going to social media is because there is a problem and they do what works. And that's what works right now because the city's not working. Thank you.
Steve Kurtz, two fifteen East Florida, Beaumont, Texas.
Yes, just one more thing, a couple of things. All of this land that Nancy Tevis donated to be a park was all of this land, I understand, up here on the bluff. And all of these city buildings are built on that land that was donated. And somehow, you know, it was for the city, I mean, it was for the, the good of the citizens. But all of this, all these buildings, I believe, is on the land that she donated to be the park, the police department, the Julie Rogers, the library, the city hall, and civic center. And so I would just like to see a, a park up here so the development could proceed from there. But I was against, my first reaction was against the USS Texas coming here. But I've changed my mind. I think that there's room for both projects. And can you imagine what that would look like? So I would just like for all of you to envision the possibilities of the future of Beaumont. Thanks.
Thank you.
That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. At this time, I will have councilmember comments, and I'll start with you, Councilmember Durio.
Only thing I have is, well, thanks to everyone for coming, thank you for your comments and your input. I would hope that we will continue to get your input as we move forward with this project. Also, Harvest Philos souls Church are giving away free meals tomorrow from four to six. It's called a grab and go. They're also going to have COVID testing there. It's at thirty-three ninety-five Highland. It's for, free meals for kids.
Thank you. Councilmember Gutz?
Well, congratulations, Mr. Manager. You finally caught your white whale. The purchase and demolition of the AT&T building that everyone else but me voted on for today shows arrogant disregard for the process. It seems that we can do one thing here, but we're not going to do it here. I pointed all that out in my previous comments in which I was interrupted. You know, Mr. Rice came up here and spoke about what we could do with five million dollars for the homeless. You know, for five million dollars, we could use a million to build a homeless shelter and operate it for five to ten years. But we'd rather have a park. I find that sad, incredibly sad. But such is life, and that is the way it's going to be. And I said before, and I'll say again, that once the vote is taken, I'm going to have to get behind it and hope for the best. I do think that downtown revitalization is important. I do think that riverfront development is important. I also think the likelihood of a developer coming to build a restaurant on the back parking lot of the civic center is remote. I will offer now during my comments, an alternative that I think the public needs to see as truly being able to get out in front with riverfront development. So let me bring my posters up.
Last week, I spoke at the possibility of locating the Battleship Texas here, which, as you can see, is right behind the Edison Plaza Building. But this structure here, I didn't talk about that last week. And that's what I want to talk about today. This is the food truck park, actual size is the way, the way it would look that I've been talking about in Naples, Florida. Now, let's look at that in a little closer detail so you...
Now let's look at that in a little closer detail so you can see what it might look like. Celebration Park, it's located on a waterway, not the beach in Naples, Florida, but on a waterway in what was actually a fairly underprivileged part of town. It was not the, I mean, I know when you talk about Naples, is anything underprivileged in Naples? Well, this area of town was, but not since I put this structure in. Celebration Park was completed in 2018. The project in the Bay Shore Arts District of Naples provides spaces for eight food trucks, a waterfront tiki bar, and entry structure, including restrooms and storage space. David Corbin Architects designed the park master plan and the structures on the site and guided it through the difficult permitting and approvals process due to the unique nature of the project. It's about 200 seats and eight food trucks. You walk in along a concourse, which we could build this infrastructure here with, I believe, the $29 million FEMA awarded money for redevelopment of Riverfront Park. There's food trucks lined up on both sides, and in the back, there's a shelter that you'll see in a minute. This has become a tourist destination. Another picture of what it looks like along the concourse as we move back. They've got the lights, burnt lights, very decorative. You're getting closer to the shelter, which you'll see in a second. This is the shelter, which is built to withstand hurricane force winds. And as I said, it's on the water, so boaters can pull their boats up and they can dock, get out, have a drink, get some food. This bar is licensed by the people that have Celebration Park to people that have all their licensure to serve alcohol. We could do the same thing here. We do it regularly. Imagine, imagine the boat traffic that we would get. There's nothing right now for boaters, and there's lots of them, to pull into and enjoy on the river. This is what it would look like at night. This is what it looks like on a typical Saturday night. People sitting out, watching sports, having a drink, getting something to eat. Again, this project could be built. I've talked to Mr. Corbin. He thinks it could come in for less than a million dollars. This would have an immediate impact on our economy and on our riverfront. So at some point, like I did with the Battleship, if this council would like to talk about this, I would ask for somebody to second this in a workshop so that we can discuss it further. Because right now, I can't answer any questions. I'm just making the comments that I'm allowed to make during my time. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Turner?
We had a know your worth brunch this previous Sunday, where we had over 40 young ladies between the age of 13 and 18. And we actually talked to them, we had a brunch with them, and we helped them find themselves. I'm a big advocate of what are we currently doing in leadership to have impact on our youth? The whole entire City Council, to my understanding, will have input on what we do in our riverfront. So I think it's a great opportunity for all of us to chime in and have the ideas that we want to present on our riverfront. I think prior to moving forward with this, we had a presentation, and our city manager did inform us, the riverfront and everything we do is solely upon what we decide to do as a whole. So we'll take all of us working together in order to get some of these projects on our riverfront. I think it's a great thing that we all have enthusiastic ideas, but it's better for us to present them to each other so we can see how we can work with one another as far as getting them done. We have a basketball camp coming up. If you know any youth that want to do basketball, it's a free basketball camp coming up this Saturday. Former professional player Nigel Pearson, he plays ball overseas, and he was the North Texas leading scorer in the history of Beaumont, Texas. Young man right here from Beaumont, Texas, product of Beaumont, coming back to his community, giving back. So I think we as a community should appreciate that, and we should support him if possible, if you know any kids that may be interested. And other than that, I thank everybody for coming out. Emails do work. I do want to address that. I have been emailed by several citizens, and I have got a lot of issues solved through email. And I do actually want to piggyback with social media. It's unfortunate, and I will say this again, it's unfortunate that it's a 311 process, but a lot of people are going to that stream of social media. And I think we got with our city manager, and we are addressing, you know, a more proactive social media on behalf of the City of Beaumont. And I'm looking forward to, you know, updating where we are with that project. I know he has met with several different entities and companies in reference to our social media. So that is something we have addressed, and we know it's a need in Beaumont, and we need to improve on how we respond via social media. And we have addressed that, and I'm looking forward to the outcome. And I know, I think something is coming pretty soon. But other than that, like I said, thank you guys for coming out. And we have to work together in order to get things done. City Council, it's a team effort. It takes all of us to get things done. So if we work as a team, I think things can get done.
Thank you, Councilmember Turner. Councilmember Phil Shaw.
Thank you, Mayor. I know it's been a long meeting, and so I'll try to be brief. This has been a emotionally charged issue regarding the property at 555 Main Street. There's been a lot of discussion, and there's different ideals that have been presented. And I do know this, though, I am convinced of this. At the town hall meeting, there seemed to be more people speaking for it than against. But there were others who spoke through emails, as Eric said. I sat down myself and personally answered 60 emails, and eventually I just wore myself, I just wore myself out. But I do try to answer the emails that I get as a council member. I try to return all the phone calls that I get. But I do know this, the night of the town hall meeting, the one thing that I did take away from that meeting is that there is a good portion of Beaumont, those that are speaking for it or against it. There's just, there is a good portion of Beaumont that is asking for hope. Leadership that is willing to take calculated risk, leadership that is bold, and that's willing to step out and do something to try to move our city forward. It was a bold move by Mayor Ames and those that were on the council back then when they did the Beaumont Event Center, the Lakeside Center. There were people that criticized that project, and yet they moved forward, and we have what we have today. So once again, this council is trying to be bold, to think outside the box, to dream and to bring hope to the city, to try to awaken our city, to move it forward. Beaumont is declining, and its population is declining as a community. And either we move forward, we take bold steps to move forward, or we can continue to decline. It's not either or. Do we fix the water in the sewer, or do we do the AT&amp;T building? It's not either or, it's both. We can maintain our city and at the same time, be bold and try to move it forward and grow it for the sake of our children and our grandchildren. So taken longer than I intended, but I do appreciate all the citizens that came out to speak for, against. We slowed it down and did the town hall meeting because the citizens asked for it. We do want to communicate to you, and we will continue to do that. Please know that this council is just trying very hard to serve its citizens and to move this city forward. We have one agenda, and that is to make Beaumont better for everybody. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Samuel. Thank you. Councilmember Neal, city manager, city attorney. Well, I would like to say that I don't think anyone has heard about the AT&amp;T project more than I have. I worked in that building for 32 years. My entire career of working in that building for 32 years, I was told that I would never retire from that address, 555 Main. Well, I've been retired 11 years as of 2010, after working 32 years there, and then my next career, I am still dealing or dealt with the AT&amp;T building. But I would like to say, over a period of, I would say, a span of 41 years, I have worked in that building, working again for the resolution of moving Beaumont forward, again with that same building. And I was excited to see the process that went forward today. It was a vote of six to one, and I would have loved for it to be unanimously all seven. But even when it's not, everyone is entitled to their vote, to their opinion. But I think for six council members to move forward, to see a change and make a bold move for our city is showing a direction in unifying our city. So I would also like to say, for the town hall meeting, we did. We halted the process of moving forward because the citizens asked us to have some transparency, to let them see and be able to comment. We left city council meeting two weeks ago, and we had a three-hour town hall meeting. And I think we got to everyone that stood up or wanted to speak. Everyone that wanted to speak, and the majority of the people, were more for it than against it. So at this point, the vote has been taken, and it was six to one. And we're going to move forward, but always know that you always have a direct access to each and every one of us, because we are doing this not for six or seven people that are sitting here, but it is for the citizens of Beaumont. So you can always contact us, you can always make a comment as to what you would like to see. And for the most part, I feel that most people are excited about it. So with that said, I want to thank each and every one of you for coming out today. And we will excuse ourselves to executive session, and thank you, and have a blessed evening.